Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's two oh three P. M. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board, to my right Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mahia, and to my left Commissioner Rachel Grant and Commissioner Emily Klaus, County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Josh Cummings and Jennifer Walker, Clerk of the Board Amy Davis. Welcome. Calling the meeting to order, we're going to begin with Pledge of Allegiance, and I will be leading that. So if you would all join us.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up will be a land acknowledgement. Mr. Vice Chair?
We'd also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We'd like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawson Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are our sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage indifference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Sure. Next up, we have approval of agenda. I will just call attention. The only change was just the addition of the term of contract on item ten of the consent agenda, which was approved by the Board a week ago and just omitted this morning. So that's in there. Otherwise, is there any items? Well, I guess, just is there a motion to approve the proposed agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Next up is a presentation regarding Volunteer Appreciation Month proclamation. Board of County Commissioners will proclaim April twenty-fifth as Volunteer Appreciation Month in Thurston County. It's the proposal. And Ellen Massey, why don't you give us an introduction to the item?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, good afternoon, Chair and Commission. My name is Ellen Massey, Management Analyst in Central Services. As you can see outside today, we have a volunteer fair happening in conjunction with your proclamation for Volunteer Appreciation Month, and I have the honor to present our speakers today. First, I'd like to invite up Marcelle Allen, who is the President and Training Coordinator for the Thurston County Washington Explorer Search and Rescue, and is also a member of the Search Management Group, who has a small presentation.
Thank you, Ellen, for the introduction. Thank you for inviting Thurston County Washington Explorer Search and Rescue, we call it TCWSAR, to share how we volunteer for our community. My name is Marcelle Allen, and I'm honored to represent Thurston County's Search and Rescue volunteers today. I started learning new skills to help our community find their loved ones ten years ago in TCWSAR, the ground team. I serve in a variety of roles for this organization: President and Training Coordinator, Group Supervisor, and Searcher on missions. In addition, I serve on the TC Management Search Team. I'm invested in our volunteers and our programs, and I really appreciate this opportunity to share about our volunteers with our services. Washington State is home to beautiful landscapes, lush forests, rugged mountains and wetlands. But the dense woods, steep slippery slopes, beating rain that helps those with vistas keep green, they make it difficult to get where help is needed. Thurston County has an all-volunteer nonprofit organizations that provide life-saving search, rescue, and recovery services for the citizens of Thurston County and the state of Washington. We provide resources such as people, canine, planning, coordination, logistics, and training to support the ground operations in wilderness, urban, and suburban environments. Our volunteers need to be able to work well in a team environment and communicate effectively under pressure. So you might ask, what is it and why is it important? We assist a law enforcement jurisdiction with its legal responsibilities. We support searching for live or deceased humans. We support search and rescue of evidence related to a crime. Our volunteers are all self-supported, we're fully equipped, and we're certified. We work within a statewide network of support. It's a little bit a give and take. So when we're needed elsewhere, we can help our counties that are nearby, and likewise, we bring in other counties to come help when Thurston County needs it. And the best part, we're free. Thurston County has four completely volunteer nonprofit organizations that provide life-saving search and rescue services throughout Washington State. We're twenty-four hours a day, we're three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. We leave in the middle of the night, the middle of our holiday meals, or whenever we're called upon. Our first is a Search Management Team, we call it T-SAR. Our second is Jeep Patrol. This is an auxiliary unit of the Sheriff's Office. You can be eighteen and older, own and operate a street legal four-by-four. They just celebrated their fiftieth anniversary. TCWSAR is our ground team. We welcome volunteers aged fourteen and older. They come from all backgrounds, and we've been around for about fifty years also. Our newest is South Puget Sound Canine Search and Rescue, but the teammates on there have a lot of experience with previous organizations. The Search Management Team brings to every search the direct mission resources and teams. We assist with determining what resources are needed for an effective search. We identify and prioritize the areas to search based on search theory, experience, and management. We have consulting services for law enforcement, and we are very happy to help. We love when they call. Up on the screen, we have some examples of different kinds of missions. Right now, we've seen an increase in cognitive decline walkaways and autistic walkaways. We have medically-induced state or altered mental states. We have wilderness for people that are missing hikers, runners, bikers, brush-and-mushroom pickers. We also help with evidence and human remains in current or old cases. Those are just a few examples. This is some fun pictures. I'd like to focus now on another unit, the TCWSAR, the ground unit. One of our new members, excuse me, our new members dedicate almost two hundred hours each from fall to spring, training to become certified. So for our unit this year, that's over five thousand hours of dedicated time total for the unit per the year in the classroom and field. In addition, they take online courses that I don't track the hours. We intentionally align our weekends with the worst weather conditions. We sleep in our tarp shelters. The saying goes, if it's raining, we're training. Some topics: we have survival and safety, search techniques. We go into our medical module, CPR, AED, bloodborne pathogens, wilderness first aid, a lot of hypo wraps, a lot of hypothermia in our area, litter and evacuation. We move on to evidence, legal issues, bones, tour of the coroner's office, especially around Halloween, that's a fun one. We move on to navigation, compass bearings, pacing distance, mapping, GPS, and new technology such as SAR topo, which is a live tracking potential. Man tracking, low-angle rope rescue, you get the idea. This is an example list of the training required of each new trainee before they're fully certified. Our volunteers must pass background checks, fingerprinting, and a youth protection course. They're part of the Washington Emergency Worker Program. They take online courses like FEMA, Independent Study one hundred and seven hundred, to understand command structure. We talked about first aid in the previous slide. After classroom instruction, they take short exams. Our members then demonstrate their knowledge at the field skills on the TCWSAR alone brings a value of over two hundred and thirty-five hundred thousand dollars this past year. You can imagine the value of all four units. The volunteer search and rescue teams are essential as an asset to our local emergency response system. In Thurston County, these volunteers respond to lots of calls every year. We locate those missing hikers in the Capitol State Forest. We assist in the flood evacuations. We support law enforcement in their evidence searches. Our local knowledge and specialized training provides rapid skilled response in terrain where every minute really counts. By supporting these teams, local governments enhance their public safety without the cost of expanding full-time services. We're maximizing our limited budgets while honoring our civic commitment to our community members. So to quote our fellow canine unit, "We are committed to providing professional, efficient, and compassionate services to locate the missing persons and reunite them with their loved ones." Through extensive training, teamwork, and collaboration with other emergency responders, we strive to make a positive impact in our community by ensuring the safety and well-being of those in need. We celebrate today our dedicated search and rescue volunteers. If you'd like more information, please reach out. Our motto, "We do these things so others may live." Thank you for
Thank you, Marcelle, and for the Thurston County Search and Rescue for being here today. Next, I'd like to welcome up to the podium Cynthia Taylor for our Stream Team.
Hello. Thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for this proclamation and for taking the time to recognize the incredible Stream Team volunteers. Stream Team is cooperatively sponsored and funded by the storm and surface water utilities of the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, and Thurston County. We provide free, quality environmental education programs and activities and hands-on action projects. Our mission is to protect and enhance the water resources and associated habitats and wildlife in Thurston County through community action and education. Volunteers are crucial to our success. Since nineteen ninety, our volunteers have been out there, rain or shine, protecting water quality and restoring habitat. And let me tell you, some of those days were a lot of rain, which is perfect because one of our goals in a nutshell is to keep rainwater clean as it flows into wells, creeks, streams, lakes, and Puget Sound. These waters are the lifeblood of our community and our health. Because of our volunteers' time and passion and muddy boots, Stream Team has created a legacy that now spans multiple generations. We've shown that water stewardship isn't just a one-time event, it's a way of life. Since we started tracking online, volunteers have logged over twenty-seven thousand hours, and in two thousand and twenty-four alone, three hundred and twenty volunteers showed up and gave almost three thousand hours to our community. Our volunteers have done it all. They have restored habitat in local parks in every jurisdiction such as Sap Road in Tumwater, Wonderwood Park in Lacey, Squawson Park in Olympia, and the McLean Creek Nature Trail in unincorporated Thurston County, and more. They have participated in citizen science efforts, surveying amphibian egg masses and collecting stream bugs that add depth to regional water quality data. They've planted oysters in Bud Bay to help filter pollution. They've showed up to community events like the Thurston County Fair, Salmon Cider, and here today at the volunteer fair to provide outreach and education. And they don't stop there. Many of them spend hours learning about salmon and clean water connections and go out and share that knowledge with thousands of curious folks. Stream Team volunteers are educators, scientists, conservationists, and community builders all rolled into one, and they do it with a smile, a sense of humor, and a genuine love of this place we call home. This proclamation is for each of them. On behalf of Stream Team, thank you for this recognition, and thank you to every volunteer out there making ripples because together we make waves. Speaking of which, I'd like to introduce a few of Stream Team's ripples. Virginia Town, who unfortunately had to leave because she had an appointment, but she was here tabling just a few minutes ago. She's a long-term Stream Team volunteer, and she wanted people to know that when she came to Olympia, she got involved in Stream Team, the Food Bank, and the Native Plant Salvage Project. She says, "My world opened up, and I began to discover a whole new life. I learned, as long as you stay active, you stay alive. I plan to live to be a hundred and four." I'd now like to introduce Zach Hancock, another Stream Team volunteer who's new, newer, and he got a start on the salmon steward program, and he has a few words to share.
Hello. Thanks, Cynthia. Thank you, guys, for the proclamation. So I'm still kind of new in the area, just moved from the East Coast a couple of years ago. Grew up in rural West Virginia, not really the greatest place for opportunities like this or kind of community events and stuff. It's almost kind of taboo in a way, you know? If you care too much about the environment or the community, it's kind of, you're one of the weird people is kind of how it's done over there. So, you know, looking for opportunities like this was difficult, but I was able to find the Stream Team and just from day one, going there and seeing the fire and the love and the passion that, you know, just they bring to wanting to make things better for everyone. You know, it's something that kind of almost breathed a new life into me and took that stigma away that has kind of shadowed me. And, you know, it's a wonderful sense of community. It's being able to help in a way that I never thought that I could. So, you know, I don't really have a lot of words to say, but otherwise, you know, I'm proud to be able to wear this hat, to be able to come up here and tell you guys how great it is that not only for Stream Team, but everyone is here, and everything that we're giving here is, you know, just for the community, the environment, for Thurston County, and, you know, the rest of the preceding, you know, population. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Zach. So if any of you here in this room or out there in the community wish to be involved in Stream Team, please visit streamteam.info. We have the following volunteer opportunities coming up. We have Earth Day Stewardship. There's a few different events happening around the community. These are Park Foundation-sponsored events. The Stream Team will be either there or helping co-sponsor them. One is happening at the Tenino City Park this Saturday, April nineteenth, and then there's another one at Woodland Creek Community Park in Lacey on May third. And then in Tumwater, there's second Saturdays happening throughout the year. The next one is May tenth. And get your hands dirty, make a difference. This ongoing restoration effort has been tackling yellow flag iris removal in Percival Creek, a noxious weed that will take over. Bring your waders and help restore this valuable habitat. McLean Creek Stewardship also happens year-round. Maintain the trails while enhancing your plant knowledge in the company of experienced volunteers and educators. Mindfully trim back growth along the trail and remove debris to keep the habitat of high value while maintaining trail accessibility. And then this late fall to early summer will be doing stream bug monitoring. This citizen science program connects people directly with local streams. Volunteers learn the protocol for collecting benthic macroinvertebrates or stream bugs. As they observe and document what they find in the field, the volunteers learn about the interconnectedness of water quality, biodiversity, and human impact on the environment. Salmon stewards is probably the best-known volunteer opportunity we have. It happens every late summer through the late fall. New volunteers start by taking a robust three-part online training program, which teaches salmon basics such as biology, habitat, harvest, hatcheries, hydroelectric, and history. Volunteers then get an end-up look at our local salmon runs, which prepares them to be docents at three viewing locations around the South Sound: the Fifth Avenue Bridge, the Tumwater Falls Hatchery, and McLean Creek. At each of these locations, salmon steward volunteers talk to people who have come to view the salmon and share stewardship practices to protect this iconic species. Finally, amphibian egg mass field surveys will begin again in late winter of two thousand and twenty-six. Get hands-on experience monitoring and identifying amphibian eggs in their natural habitat. These monitoring events help us to better understand amphibian population trends in our urban ponds. So please stop by our booth or sign up online for our monthly email that will keep you informed of more opportunities, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Cynthia and Stream Team. And finally, I'd like to invite up Elizabeth Walker, who is the CEO of the South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity.
Hi. Thank you very much for having us here today and for hosting this fair and elevating the voice of volunteers in our community. My name is Elizabeth Walker. I'm the CEO of South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity, and I also want to extend my appreciation to staff and commissioners for all of your support in our efforts over the years here as we try to build up more homeownership opportunities and more sustainable housing for our community. I'm struck here by looking at your vision of a well-being of generations to live, work, and play. It lines really closely with what we're trying to do. We're seeing a lot of people facing housing situations that are making them choose between staying here and paying groceries or living elsewhere and working here, and we're trying to be a part of creating some solution there. So by way of background in what our mission is trying to accomplish, we know that too many of our Thurston County neighbors are facing housing situations that are untenable. It's critical for a healthy community to have multiple types of housing at an affordable rate when they need it. It's the housing continuum. And we sit within that continuum with homeownership, and we think of homeownership as not just for those that have all the money, but we want to make sure that homeownership is accessible to low- and moderate-income populations as well, because it has a lot of benefits. It creates generational wealth transfer. It is a way to increase educational outcomes. It is correlated with fewer chronic illnesses, and it just creates more life options for people. So when we think about that, kind of that dynamic between being able to live here and work here, we want to also make sure that homeownership is a real opportunity for low- and moderate-income populations. And the thing is about this county is that it's been growing, right? And housing prices have been growing astronomically. In the last ten years, we've seen a hundred and nineteen percent increase in home prices against a fifty-one percent increase in wages, and that's a gap that's not sustainable, right? That's where we get the wealth gaps, where we get the disparities in lots of different areas when those type of numbers don't align with each other. It means that a third of our neighbors are cost-burdened or severely cost-burdened in this county. So as Habitat for Humanity, we work on homeownership in a few different ways to try to alleviate some of this burden. We have an affordable homeownership program, which is about first-time homebuyers being able to purchase a home at an affordable rate. We build the homes. We build them with really high-quality materials. We make sure they're energy-efficient, so all those energy bills can be really manageable. And then we sell them at a rate to our buyers that is affordable for their household income and household size. We are planning a hundred and sixty-two units over the next five years. We have twenty-eight going in in Tumwater, twenty-two in Yelm, and a hundred and twelve in Olympia. We also have home preservation efforts, because we know it's not just about getting into homeownership, it's also about being able to stay in homeownership. You know, someone may have purchased their home a long time ago, but is still living in a low-to-moderate-income household, and repairs might be the tipping point of being able to stay in your home or not, being able to pay for your energy bills or not, being able to pay for your groceries or not. So we do critical repairs. That's mold remediation, roofs, plumbing, siding. We also do aging in place. We're developing a program around that so that people can stay in their homes longer and safely. That's ramps, that's shower accessibility, grab bars, et cetera. And then we also work in energy efficiency. That's making sure that low-to-moderate-income households can afford their energy costs, but also so they don't get sick within their homes, so they're not dealing with mold in the first place. We're happy to partner with Energize Thurston for the heat pump campaign, and also just being able to make houses tighter so that they're healthier to live in. So that brings us to volunteerism, and that's why we're here. Our mission was founded with volunteers at the core, and to this day, that's still incredibly true. They're a critical part of how we make our programming happening, how we make sure fewer and fewer of our Thurston County neighbors suffer for lack of affordable housing. And we have volunteer opportunities year-round, like our great other presenters do. We have resale stores at which someone could volunteer any day of the week for different shift durations. You could merchandise, you can take in donations, you could help customers, you can go out on the truck. And then we also have kind of the volunteer opportunities that we're a little bit more familiar with on our construction site and our repair site. So grab a hard hat, come on out, Wednesday through Saturday, eight to two-thirty, no skills required. We have a great team that will teach you the skills you need, and you'll learn something there, and also make a really great tangible impact when you're out there. As a volunteer, you work side-by-side with our team, our homebuyers, our homeowners. you work side-by-side with our team, our homebuyers, our homeowners, other volunteers. Last year, volunteers contributed over 19,000 hours to our mission, which is a phenomenal number, but it's also one that needs to keep growing because our production is growing. So we are on a call for more, for more volunteers to come help our mission do more. Um, you know, people come to, come to volunteer for a lot of reasons, and they get a lot of different things out of it. Some examples we have, uh, we just had a team build from Griffin School District that organized a team to come support one of our homebuyers whose children attend their schools. Um, we have a longtime repairs volunteer who likes to get every detail just right and takes a lot of pride in installing upright shower systems for people who are wheelchair-bound. Um, you know, we have a volunteer who's come out now for weekly for 25 years and is an expert in flooring, and now takes a lot of pride in teaching people about flooring. Uh, we have groups of women who come out annually during our Women Build and rally around our women-led households, raise money, and get a lot done. So, the point is, is that you, anyone, can find a, a space within our volunteering opportunities that will be meaningful for you if you're interested. And, um, we're also really excited that this commission and staff members will be coming out in September to get your hands dirty on our build site for, I think, three different days. So, we're lucky to have your support, both hands-on and also through, uh, your great staff that really puts good thinking in how to help us do more for, uh, the community that we all call home here. So, thank you.
Thank you so much Elizabeth. Habitat. Um, Chair, I'll turn it over to you. We can do the proclamation, and then, um, as normal, we'll go out and do some photographs and then mail around for the last 30 minutes to recess and then come back. So I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so any comments or questions from the board? Nope. Okay. Um, then we'll go ahead and read the proclamation.
This is the proclamation for Thurston County Volunteer Appreciation Month. Whereas the month of April has been dedicated as National Volunteer Month to recognize the importance of volunteering and honoring the significant contributions volunteers make by generously donating their time and talents to worthy causes. Are we doing it around robin? Typically in this one, I read the whole thing, but in the Board of Health, we take turns. I will continue reading unless you guys feel the need. Okay. Just don't want to be presumptive. Okay. Take advantage of me. Whereas the month of April is an opportunity to salute the unparalleled services of volunteer contributions encompassing a broad range of needs across our community, including housing services, resource distribution, community response services, and more. And whereas the dedicated volunteers of Thurston County are an integral part of improving the quality of life of our most vulnerable residents by lending their time, skills, and energy to support various causes. And whereas the volunteer participation is one of the most effective ways to make a positive impact in your community and play a critical role in good government. And whereas Thurston County has nearly 25 boards and commissions at any given time that advise the Board of County Commissioners and county staff on policies, programs, and the many issues facing our community. And whereas there are numerous individual businesses, individuals, businesses, and organizations that serve Thurston County, and to them, we say, "Thank you." Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Thurston County hereby proclaim April 2025 as Volunteer Appreciation Month in Thurston County, and encourages all citizens to honor volunteers for their countless contributions to our community and nation adopted this 15th day of April 2025 by the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, with that, the board is going to be in recess until, we're going to go to, uh, 2:50, about 16 minutes. We're going to be taking some photographs with our guests. The volunteer fair is out there, and there are some light refreshments in the back. We do have a number of public commenters and two public hearings, so, uh, we will recommence at 2:50, but you're welcome to, to stay in the ATM and continue to, you know, mingle if that's your preference. So thank you very much, and we'll be back at 2:50.
Okay, it's 2:51. We are back from recess. Thank you, everybody, and the volunteers who came out today and spoke at the event and participated. We really appreciate that. Next up is public comment, and I'll go through the guidelines because we have a number of people signed up. The Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. There are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate. When introduced, introduce yourself, including the area of the county in which you reside. Address the board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. The board will not respond directly to public comment, but on an as-needed basis, the county manager may follow up with specific items today or at a future meeting. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes and may not donate time to any other speaker. The board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for good cause. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business, or remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the board on appeal. Finally, all written materials provided to the county may be considered public record and subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 4256 of RCW. Thank you for cooperation, and we'll start with Brian Muirhead with John Pettit on deck.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Muirhead. I'm a resident of Thurston County. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of thousands of county citizens whose quality of life is impacted by loud train horns sounded 150 times a day at the Atchison Road Crossing. You're familiar with the work we've been doing to try to establish a quiet zone to have the horns not sounded regularly. At a recent meeting, we were given information on the basis of the Washington County Risk Pool for not covering quiet zones. Now, we were informed by the county manager, Mr. Hernandez, that if the Risk Pool was covered in quiet zones, it would eliminate the issue that you've had in the past associated with liability. So, we received a letter from the Risk Pool, signed by Mr. Chuck Boyd, who was the director, which provides a detailed explanation of their basis for not covering Quiet Zones. It specifically details a number of four items that are associated with interaction with the railroad side of the crossing, not the roadway itself. We had technical experts who have experience with, who have been or currently part of the Federal Railroad Administration, look at the letter, review the letter in detail, and both of them confirmed that there's the basis that was cited in the letter of using the FRA Quiet Zone brochure was not correct. They did not use that basis. And that our proposed supplementary safety measure, which is a non-troversial curb down the middle of the road that is designed to prevent people from driving around the gates, does not, is not affected by their concern, or is not relevant to their concern. Mr. Stewart, one of the FRA experts we talked to suggested we look at the diagnostic reviews for other counties or counties and cities where they have, which is the basis for the design of a quiet zone. So, the diagnostic review is something we've talked to you about, asked you about. Now, with that diagnosis, we've got the reports from both Skagit County and from, more recently, from the city of Kent, which addresses the issues associated with the establishment of the quiet zone. A quiet zone diagnostic review involves the county, Public Works, involves the FRA, involves the Utilities Transportation Commission, and, of course, the railroad. Neither diagnostic review report that we have read and have in place identified any issues involved with the railroad lines themselves or their equipment. If our diagnostic review shows similar result, then the statements made by the WCRP in their letter are completely inaccurate. They are not correct. They are not applicable to our condition. So, we believe that the liability, based on this letter, associated with our proposed quiet zone is no different than the liability the county faces for any roadway or traffic crossing. It is completely covered. It should completely be covered by the WCRP. Therefore, we request respectfully, Board of Commissioners, direct Public Works to conduct a diagnostic review of the Atchison Road Crossing, which we, citizens of the area, all of us, the leaders, all engineers, are very happy to support and work with Public Works. We believe that with a diagnostic review in hand, Risk Manager or somebody else in the county could go to WCRP and say, "Your justification for not covering quiet zones is not accurate. It is not appropriate." And I believe in that end case, they would end up being able to cover the quiet zone as we've designed it. So, we'll be providing more detail, in a detailed write-up that we'll be providing to you, and we'll invite other members of our group and maybe some of our citizens to come in and tell you some of the stories about the quality of life issues they have. So, I know you can't respond to me, but we will look forward to hearing from you as follow-up on what we're trying to do here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Pettit is up with Jerry Murray on deck.
I don't know what it is. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit, and I am, I'm going to kind of bring up a certain topic. I get to know a lot of the county employees on a separate level because they know I'm around doing different things. And, you know, I really, I think we have a great group of county employees. They show up to work. They put in their time, and they go home. And I'm hoping that I can put together maybe a Thurston County employee picnic there at the ranch this summer so they can all come together and enjoy themselves. But what I wanted to convey was, is that I've watched many, many years of Commissioners that have come up here. And being a Commissioner by itself, I've seen levels of respect for the Commissioners from the county staff. And right now, I'm kind of seeing it kind of at a low point. And I'm not really identifying any exact reason for that, but I could perceive a couple of reasons for it. And so, I'm going to bring this up to you to mention it. Having managed people before, I got to tell you that there seems to be a little bit of an air involved that the county Commissioners are somehow above and more important than all of these other employees out here with the county. I can assure you that's not true. Okay? Number one. Number two, even in your own county policies, you are identified as, the term county employee is intended to include Board of County Commissioners, your county employees. That's the way it works. Now, as county employees, we get into a couple of issues. Are you holding yourselves accountable or each other accountable to the same level you would any other county employee? And my answer to that is, right now, is I'm quite sure you're not. Okay? How many county employees could decide just to zoom in and start talking? Or maybe we can just have the person out front here zoom in to do their job at the front desk? It requires showing up. Now, your particular policies, your policies, state right here when you're going to be, supposed to be here at work. Minimum full-time work. Minimum hours of work, full-time, regular employee shall be 40 hours per week. The normal 40-hour week shall be 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, including one unpaid hour for lunch. That means you're supposed to be here, working, 8 to 5. But there also becomes another little particular issue that goes on. And that is prohibited outside employment. And prohibitive outside employment would include any, a work-related act related to outside employment during an employee's hours of work at the county. Now, I think, I'll try to say this in a polite way. I think you guys have been covering up for somebody else here on your own board. Somebody who's working as a full-time fireman, as their first-position job, and coming here and playing Commissioner during the other time. That's not allowed by your own policies. Integrity would say you'd resign your position here if you want to stay a fireman, or you would resign your, you know, position as a fireman if you want to be a Commissioner. But it's against county policies. And in that, in that respect, I would direct that it would be appropriate for Mr. Foreigner to make a decision whether he wants to be a fireman or a county Commissioner. Absent that, it's up to you guys to take the appropriate action to remove him if he doesn't want to end his position.
Time's up, Mr. Pettit.
Is my time up?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I don't want to take too much. I did drop off a copy for you. And I'm just asking you, the best way to lead other people is to follow the rules and guidelines you expect them to follow. Okay? Thank you.
Next up is Jerry Murray. Brian Trembley on deck.
Commissioners, managers. I, my name's Jerry Murray. I live in Mason County. I am here at the request of Brian Trembley to present an issue that's been troubling Brian for some time. So, I'm just going to read his words to you. "My topic today is law enforcement in Thurston County. I am a victim of felony theft. If convicted, the bad guys are facing five to 10 years. I was victimized in Tumwater. Three weeks later, my family and I located and recovered my property outside of Rainier, Washington. After 18 months, there has been no arrest of the chop shop owner, and one of the two thieves was arrested. His crime was his 12th felony. He was free when he committed the theft against me. I was told there was no way he would be released until his trial because he couldn't afford bail. And he was ordered to pay bail on all 12 accounts. On March 3, he was released by Judge Skinder on a day when my prosecuting attorney was on vacation. As a result, I had no voice in the court. He was not fitted with a tracker, even though he has never shown up for any previous court dates. The other thief, Woody, was found under a bonfire with a bullet in the back of his head on a property off Old McKenna outside of Yelm, which is where my property was taken after the theft. It was then transported to a chop saw, chop shop outside of Rainier. The chop shop operator has been known since Gary Edwards was the sheriff. Gary knew him by nickname. He was never been arrested. He has never been arrested, but has been in operation since Gary's watch or before. The night of the recovery of my machine, TC SO went in, stayed for a while, confirmed my property, and then left me unprotected there for a couple of hours pending toying my theft. During the blackest of nights, on a property of a known meth distributor, knowing that three days prior, there was a shooting that had happened there. My property was being very well concealed under a willow tree. The ignition was punched out, the license plate removed. Several metal parts were being removed or scrapped. An identification plate had been ground off, et cetera. The chop shop owner admitted to paying $2,500 down, was going to pay $15,000 total, knowing it was an $80,000 machine. His words, "I'm sorry, officer. I had no idea it was stolen." The sergeant told me that this quote is what has prevented them with arresting this fellow. There is a witness who can testify otherwise, but TC SO did not interview either of us after the sergeant left the scene. I was told that TC SO would not proceed with the investigation unless I became my own detective and gave them more information. Otherwise, they consider my case closed. When I became my own detective, I spoke with a man who told me the people on the property next door left him alone because he helped them bury a murder victim. To my knowledge, that lead was not followed up on by TC SO. We can't record him. We would be violating his civil rights. What to do? What would you want us to do? Knock on his door and talk with him? Brian says, "Yes." There are only two reasons, I think, in which he would be admitting to being an accessory to murder. One, he wanted to scare me away. Two, he was done being blackmailed and wanted to turn someone in. And should he be interviewed by TSO? Well, certainly. I went to the office of TC SO and was approached by an officer. "Brian, you're one of the lucky ones. You got your mill back. Your livelihood? I think you should turn around, walk away from the bad guys, and say, 'No harm, no foul.'"
Four minutes is up.
"Without such, without so much as an arrest at the chop shop, I have no civil case. My sheriff, my sheriff in Calves County is appalled by the handling of this case." Let me sum it up. 12-time felon who has never shown up to court, was released with a tracker without representation from the victim. The second thief was murdered. By the way, he was left to rot on the ground, only being set on fire when the stench got so bad. Neighbor told me that Doug got, got, I won't even say that.
Sir, your time's up.
Even though my property was, yeah, it's too, it's horrid. Even though my property was worth $80,000, it referred to as a simple property theft without the realm of law enforcement. It took 65 days for prosecuting attorney to meet with me. When he did, he made me feel unimportant. There is an eyewitness to the chop shop guy knowing it was stolen. As of last week, there was no effort to locate and interview her. After 18 months of multiple..."
Sir, I'm going to, I'm going to have to stop you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Trembley?
Yes, sir.
You're up, and Melanie Ravaglia is on deck.
I'm sorry?
You're up. You have four minutes.
So, after 18 months of multiple attempts to communicate with your sheriff, he never responded and refused to reply to me in any way. I randomly met him on the sidewalk outside of this building last week. He said he was too busy to see me for 18 months. Does he ever speak to a victim? His only response to me was a laughing emoji when I commented on one of his many Facebook posts. And to my face, he told me that he thought that was a pretty good response. A laughing emoji to a victim. "He wants to get home at night to his family," he said, "and I get that. My family is out at least $100,000. I guess that's not enough loss in his county to justify their best effort to obtain justice for me, unless you're famous. Example, Will Finn is accused of absconding with only $20,000, but since he used to be a mayor, his case is plastered all over the Internet. I'm sure they're spending a lot of man-hours on that case. If it doesn't involve rape, kidnapping, arson, and whatever else comes before, simple property theft, my case has no merit. When is enough enough? I have nobody being my knight in shining armor here. Every government agency I have contacted has responded the same when I asked for help, quote, 'Not my job.' Sheriffs appear to be answerable to no one. Gary Edwards told me in person that they can't conduct a multiple-agency investigation against the old mechanic chop shop. It just couldn't be done. Two weeks later, that exact thing that he said couldn't be done, it was done in another town within Thurston County. In Thurston County, if a crime is committed against you, make doubly sure that it's heinous enough for you to receive justice." make doubly sure that it's heinous enough for you to receive justice. It's my impression, as well as other victims, that TCO, TCSO, and I'm sorry to say this, they share this with me. They consider them to be either lazy or dirty. I want to include that very likely they're understaffed. I have had five groups approach me and offered vigilante justice. My case went national when the second story regarding the recovery was sent out on the wire. I am back to work now. I don't feel I have to carry the suicide prevention hotline number with me anymore. I've been stopped many times and asked, "Is this the machine that was stolen?" Well, for better or worse, this is a famous case that reflects poorly on Thurston County's justice system. So what do I hope to achieve with this presentation? One, encourage all in your prosecuting attorney's office to not wait as long as mine did to me to speak to a victim. Ensure that victims are respected more so than criminals are protected. Two, train all in law enforcement never to say anything like, "No harm, no foul." Three, please help your sheriff mature and someday be the sheriff that you thought you elected. If your sheriff respects victims more, perhaps deputies would do the same. For him to avoid me because he is too busy, you need to understand, you could be a victim someday. I hope he's not too busy for you. It was, number four. It was thought that creating a task force to stop a major crime ring from operating simply was impossible. Well, to victims, it should not only be possible, but required. My estimates are that this group brings in at least a couple of million dollars per year, with me, you, and countless victims footing the bill in secret. My last point, convince your sheriff to finish detective work on at least one case, mine. Remember, in your futures, you could be a victim. I'm sure you would agree that no victim should ever be treated like me in this case. Help me make a, make your county a better county. Thank you for your time, and I would like to ask, do I have any more time?
You do not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Rubaglia, and then Steve Albrecht is on deck.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Melanie Rubalia. I reside in Grays Harbor County, but I work here for Thurston County, specifically in the Public Works Department. Thanks for listening to me today, and thanks for your active, active involvement in our community. Physically, your participation in the Bakota event with the casket races was wonderful. Public Works came out and supported that too and participated. I plan on participating in Procession of the Species, and that's why I'm here to talk to you today. I appreciate your involvement. I appreciate your monetary support when it comes to the hotel tax. The Luminary is not this weekend, but next weekend. Luminary is Friday?
Awesome.
Yeah, cool.
Procession is on Saturday. Luminary starts at eight-thirty PM. Procession starts at four-thirty in the afternoon. People come from miles around to participate in this. To me, it's the greatest event in Thurston County, and it just happens to be in the city of Olympia. For an entire month, this goes on. They come from afar to participate in workshops, to create costumes. This will be the back of my turtle, because I plan on walking as a turtle this year. It takes me a long time to get there. All good things and all good time as turtles do. So, we make costumes, we make luminaries, and they make musical instruments. And all of these provide skills, working with fabrics, designing, engineering, and cooperation with other people. They do this all for the grand event, the actual procession. Once again, the Luminary is on Friday night, the twenty-fifth, at eight-thirty, and Procession is on the twenty-sixth at four-thirty. I hope to see all of you there. I saw you there at Bakota. I want to see you there again. Thank you. Procession continues to need your help. Funding keeps this event going. The money from the county collected by the hotel tax is needed more than ever. The Armory has been a wonderful home for us for the last two years. And with the news of a long-needed remodel, the future there is not very secure. Funding this event in two thousand and twenty-five is the first step in providing security for its future in Thurston County. Normally, you guys will see Eli standing here and talking to you. But when Eli realized what I did and who I worked for at Public Works, he's been pounding on me every week and go, "Go talk to the commissioners. Go talk to the commissioners." So I'm here talking to the commissioners. I didn't see you guys last week, the week before, but have been waiting. So here it is. Procession is coming, the big event. And a lot of people just think it's those two days, but it's not. It's a whole month leading up to it. To see Griffin Elementary School in there making little bee costumes, and their little children with black hands, and I'm going, "Stay away from my stuff. Stay away from my stuff." But it's like, the energy level and the excitement, it's part of, to me, what makes Thurston County great. Not Olympia, Thurston County. So, I'm still hoping to see you with me. I wanted a banjo player. Because back to, we have, we've got, you're not allowed to have any, any, anything electronic. Well, banjos are not electronic.
Right.
So, thanks, have a great day. I'm going back to work now. See you.
And Matt will be happy about that.
Steve Albrecht is up, and then we'll go to the folks online.
Commissioners, my name is Steve Albrecht. I live out on Johnson Point in the Fifth District in Thurston County. And I'm here today to talk about the relationship between the Board of Commissioners and the Thurston County Board of Health. You've recently struggled with whether to resize the Board of Health. And there's currently state legislation pending that may or may not affect your ability to do that. I know that the commissioners have a lot on their plates, and so that has been part of the impetus for perhaps removing two of the commissioners from the Board of Health. Your plates are full, honestly. You have a five-hundred-and-eighty-eight-page agenda today. And the last thing I think any of us want are commissioners who are burned out. But I also think one of the last things we want, particularly with diminishing federal support for public health, we want more representation and more democratic involvement at the Board of Health. When the Board grew to twelve members, you wisely develop subcommittees. And I would suggest that should the county commission decide that only three commissioners should sit on the Board of Health, that those subcommittees on education and outreach, on data and on policy, would be an excellent way to expand citizen involvement and to bring qualified, motivated expertise from the, from the members of the community to the County Board of Health by increasing the size and the structure of your subcommittees. So I would encourage you, again, as you try to right-size those with electeds, that you create more opportunities for motivated volunteers in our community to work with the County Board of Health. Thank you for all you do for us.
Nice synergistic commentary, all right. Appreciate that. So anyone else in the boardroom that would like to give comment did not sign up to do so? Yes, sir. Come on down.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Douglas Grover, and I'm here on behalf of the fifteen-hundred, actually over fifteen-hundred amateur radio operators in Thurston County. Thurston County is a home of electronic development. This has been a great opportunity for the county to benefit from the volunteers that work not only diligently at Thurston County Amateur Radio Emergency Service over at the ECC on Tilly Road, but also the more than fifteen-hundred amateur radio operators around the county. We're here, commissioners, to help the county provide communications when all else fails. Lastly, I'd like to invite each of the commissioners to the Amateur Radio Summer Field Day on June twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of this year. It's going to be held at the Lacey Depot Market. That's in between Lacey Boulevard and Pacific Avenue Southeast. Highly trafficked area. Great opportunity for you to witness in person the value of amateur radio to the county. Thank you very much, commissioners. I hope you have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Mr. Grover. Appreciate that. Anyone else in the boardroom? Anyone online? Mr. Markley?
Good afternoon. I'm here for public hearing in respect to the changes to the salary commission. I don't know if we want to wait until that point at three-thirty. If you'd prefer to speak to me now?
We are going to be opening that hearing shortly after three-thirty. So if you could hang on, we would appreciate hearing from you at that point.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? I don't see anyone, so we will close public comment. Thanks, everybody, for that. And we will turn to County Managers' update.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to thank the staff and all the volunteers who joined us today. And in the spirit of volunteerism, and thanks to Commissioner Masiya for putting us in contact with the South Hugid Sound Habitat for Humanity. We are working with them to have our own county-sponsored build days on September fifth, September twelfth, and September twenty-sixth. It'll be an opportunity for Thurston County employees to come together and to sign up to join work parties and go out and help advance the Habitat for Humanity's mission by building alongside their trained expert. When I took the overview of it, I said, "You're actually going to let us build and hammer and saw?" They said, "Yes." And I had no idea that, I thought we were going to do other stuff, maybe like not handling machinery. But they're going to let us do that, so we're excited to get out there. And again, just thanks for all the hard work from our admin staff that put this together and bringing the community in for execution of our board meetings. I think it's making great progress. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, we have a consent agenda that includes items one through twenty. Any requests to remove one of those items? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as approved.
Second.
Motion second, that's a non-abailable motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items are all approved. That brings us to department item one, under sub-one, Central Services, NPP Gov Cooperative Membership. Bruce Rorba, interim Director of Central Services, to brief the board. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I am Bruce Rorba, interim Central Services Director. Central Services is requesting authorization to join NPP Gov, which is a national cooperative procurement organization offering publicly solicited contracts to government entities nationwide. Their contracts are created through a public solicitation and award process. Membership is free, and there are no minimum purchasing requirements. This cooperative will expand the county's ability to access contracts that will save employee time, give volume price discounts, and gain access to a larger pool of vendors. The county recognizes that using bid processes and contracts awarded by another public agency can achieve efficiency and greater volume discounts. The county encourages the use of these opportunities in accordance with the provisions of Chapter thirty-nine, thirty-four, RCW, requiring the public agency that awarded the bid, proposal, or contract to comply with its own procurement requirements and to post the bid or solicitation on the internet. NPP Gov satisfies these requirements through its competitive procurement practices. NPP Gov further offers access to goods and equipment that are not otherwise available through Washington State Master Contracts. Here to answer any questions.
Questions, continue.
Questions, do you have a comment?
Yes, Ms. Grant.
You know, I just want to acknowledge, you know, the thoughtful approach around this and, and really, the group of people who worked to have a commitment to accountability, transparency, and stewardship of funds. So good job to you and your team.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm ready for motion.
I move to approve the intergovernmental cooperative agreement between NPP Gov and Thurston County for cooperative procurement and authorize the interim Central Services Director to enter into membership and execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion second to approve the NPP Gov Cooperative Membership Agreement. Any discussion on that motion? Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is two, under sub-one, or under Central Services, sub-two, setting a public hearing for proposed ordinance amending Thurston County Code to regulate disposition of public property for affordable housing.
Good morning, afternoon, commissioners. Rick Thomas, I'm the manager of our capital projects planning group. And this agenda item is to schedule a public hearing to receive and consider public testimony on the proposed ordinance amending Thurston County Code two-point-one-zero-four to regulate the disposition of public property for affordable housing in accordance with RCW thirty-nine-point-three-three-point-zero-one-five. This special disposition process would apply where the county has real property that is surplus and its needs, and transfer the property would result in a public benefit, such as, but not limited to, contributing to supply of affordable housing, supporting temporary housing or other response to homelessness, or improving essential public services such as transportation or utilities that support the goals of affordable housing development and providing economic and social stability for low-income persons. In such cases, the Board of County Commissioners transfer the surplus real property to an approved public, private, or non-governmental organization for public benefit purposes. We'd like to recommend, we'd like to request that the Board of County Commissioners set a public hearing for May the sixth, twenty-twenty-five, at three-thirty PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard. Any questions?
Questions on this item regarding the public hearing? Nope, okay, thank you.
I move to set a public hearing for May sixth, twenty-twenty-five, at three-thirty PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard at three thousand Pacific Avenue Southeast, room one-ten, Olympia, to accept and consider public comments on the proposed ordinance amending Thurston County Code two-dot-one-zero-four to regulate the disposition of public property for affordable housing in accordance with RCW three-nine-dot-three-three-dot-zero-one-five.
Second.
Motion in a second to set the public hearing. Any discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor--
You have a hand?
I have a hand.
Sorry, sorry, Commissioner.
No, I just want to thank staff for this. This is definitely just one of those partnerships that, you know, we've had with the community. And I think this is for a great cause. So thank you for moving this along and for getting us here, Rick.
I'll just throw in that this is, can be a powerful tool that we haven't had in the city of Lacey. And the Lot Clean Water Alliance are piggybacking on, on using these laws to promote a project with the Housing Authority in Lacey. So it can be something that's good, win-win for the community. So, thank you. That, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is sub-three, sole-source purchase for TCSO Motorola radios.
Bruce Rorba, interim Central Services Director. Thurston County Fleet Services is requesting to purchase portable and mobile radios in the amount of three-hundred-and-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. These radios are to outfit vehicles and equip staff added in two thousand and twenty-five for the Thurston County Sheriff's Office with the public safety sales tax. This radio purchase is required for interoperability with the nine-one-one dispatching center in Thurston County and provides interoperable, consistent, and reliable emergent communication throughout the county. The radios are to be procured through a sole-source contract with Motorola. The county is leveraging TCOM negotiated pricing. Due to the large volume of purchases for the TCOM upgrade, this pricing is most advantageous for the county. Sole-source was determined to be appropriate due to the requirements of both TCOM nine-one-one and Motorola. Thurston County Fleet Services, in collaboration with the Sheriff's Office, anticipated this purchase for two thousand and twenty-five, and budget appropriation for these radios was made in the two thousand and twenty-five budget. The funding source is the public safety sales tax. This purchase supports Initiative Twelve in the strategic plan to enhance effective and timely law enforcement responses to protect public safety. I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions on the Motorola radio item? Nope, is there a motion?
I move to approve a sole-source contract with Motorola in the amount of three-hundred-and-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and forty-eight cents for the purchase of eighteen mobile radios, eighteen portable radios, and associated equipment, and authorize the Director of Central Services to execute the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Motion in second to approve this sole-source purchase. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing now, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Bruce. Okay, so it is three-thirty, and I guess-- Okay, so it is 3:30, and I guess I'm going to look to my seatmates. Typically, we would pause the meeting, the hearing, go to the public hearings. Definitely do that if there was a lot of people here for those public hearings. I know we have one gentleman online. We do have staff. Is it, I'm going to ask my seatmates, would you, should we move to the public hearings? Okay, I see nods, so we're going to do that. That's typical practice. So we're going to pause the board agenda and move to our two public hearings, which were both set for 3:30. I don't expect they're going to take a ton of time, so hang on if you're here for the additional business items. But first up is, let's get them in order. First up is an Auditor's Office item, public hearing for precinct boundary changes and Commissioner, County Commissioner District legal descriptions. So the purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public testimony on proposed 2025 election precinct maintenance plan. In accordance with RCW 29A16040, precinct boundaries may be altered at any time as long as sufficient time exists prior to a given election and that no precinct exceeds 1,500 active registered voters. City of Lacey has had multiple annexations. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined by Zoom, emailed in comment, or mailed in comment, or they may be in the boardroom. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select B O C C Meetings, Hearings, and Work Session Agendas. The information to join this public hearing remotely is posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream available through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Procedurally, Thurston County Auditor Staff will provide information on this topic. Anyone in the boardroom will be called. Anyone on Zoom who wish to testify, your name will be read aloud, and you will have four minutes. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the record. Our public hearing is open, and I will turn it to Lynn Watanabe for an auditor hall. Sorry, I didn't see you, auditor hall. Welcome. Auditor Hall will give us the background that we need, and Lynn's here if we need her.
Sure. We have an RCW, it's 29A16040, that states that no precinct changes may be made in the period starting seven days prior to the first day the candidates file for office. So this is April 28th. So we've asked the Board to set this public hearing. We've posted this information on our website. Hopefully, people have had a chance to look at it. But these changes are necessary due to the reasons that Commissioner Menzare stated, that we have limits on precinct size, and we've had a lot of annexations, especially in the city of Lacey. So Lynn is going to take you through what these changes are. And no Commissioner District boundaries will be affected. It's simply the precinct boundaries, so we can comply with state law because precincts cannot split cities. They can't be in the county and the city simultaneously. So that is why we are making those changes. So I will turn it over to Lynn.
Thank you, Auditor Hall, again, for the record. My name is Lynn Watanabe with the Auditor's Office. Just a note, school, fire, cemetery, park, inner-city transit, and conservation district lines may split a whole precinct, thus creating precinct splits. And these are the .1, .2s that appear when the districts are on the ballot. So as an overview, there are five City of Lacey annexations. We have seven precinct adjustments due to the number of active voters approaching 1,500, and four precinct boundary adjustments. So the first area we'll look at is the City of Lacey, the Dram Road and Cuyahoga Park North annexations that happened in 2024 and 2025, and a precinct boundary adjustment in that area. Note also that Carpenter Road is a County Commissioner District boundary. So first, we have the Dram Road and Cuyahoga Park North annexations in 2024. The northern annexation is a Cuyahoga Park North, and the southern annexation is the Dram Road. So we're going to move the annex areas west of Carpenter Road to Lacey 53. Approximately 14 voters are affected. And the annex area of Carpenter Road to, sorry, the annex area east of Carpenter Road to Lacey 55, which approximately is zero voters. The white dotted lines are the areas that are moving, and the red lines are the precinct boundaries. So afterwards, approximately just 14 voters are going to be affected by this move. The next one is the Dram Road and Cuyahoga Park North Island annexations that occurred in 2025. Again, Carpenter Road is a County Commissioner District boundary, and there's also a public utility district boundary around the precinct Tolmi. So the northern annexation is the Cuyahoga Park North Islands, and the southern annexation is the Dram Road Island annexation. So we're going to add the annex areas west of Carpenter Road to Lacey 53, which is about 323 voters. And the entire Tolmi precinct was annexed, so we're going to create a new Lacey 60 with precinct number 360. Approximately nine voters are affected there, and retire the precinct Tolmi. Again, the total approximate number of voters affected is 332. The Dram Road and Cuyahoga Park North annexation area where we have the precinct boundary adjustment is between Henderson and Woodland. And we're going to move the precinct boundary line to follow the section line, adding the portion of Henderson south of the section line to Woodland. There's about 16 voters in there. So that's the new boundary, and about, again, about 16 voters are affected. The next is the Precinct Forest, which is approaching 1,500 active registered voters. So we're going to divide Forest North and South along 25th Avenue, the portion south to be renamed Forest South, precinct number 115, and the portion north to be named Forest North with a new precinct number of 17. So the new voter total of Forest South is 623, and the voter total of New Forest North is 784. Next is Precinct McIntosh, which is approaching 1,500 active registered voters, and we're going to have a precinct boundary adjustment. Note that McIntosh is split by school and fire district boundaries, so they have, it has six splits in total. So the first split that we're going to do is we're going to divide McIntosh East and West along the school district boundary. The portion east is going to be renamed McIntosh East, precinct 149. The portion west to be named McIntosh West, precinct 14. And approximate voters affected is 692. The next split we're going to do is adding the portion of McIntosh West in Fire District 6 to Stedman, the precinct just north, and then adding the bottom portion of Stedman, not in a fire district, to McIntosh West. Approximate voters moved to McIntosh West is zero, and approximate voters moved to Stedman is 15. And what that ends up with is McIntosh East will only have two splits, and McIntosh West will have three splits. So we removed one of the splits. Next is Sunwood Lakes. It's approaching 1,500 active registered voters, and we have a precinct boundary adjustment. So we're going to divide out Sunwood Lakes subdivision westerly along the school district boundary, then east along the section line, and then along Spurgeon Creek Road, 80th Avenue, Donhill Drive, and Trauba Avenue. We're going to add the portion of Sunwood Lakes south of 80th and 83rd to Spurgeon Creek, and the portion south to be renamed Sunwood Lakes South, given the same precinct number 165, and the portion north to be renamed, or to be named Sunwood Lakes North, with a new precinct number of 15. Approximate number of voters moved to Spurgeon Creek is 66, and approximate voters in newly created precinct is 550. All right, and then the next precinct is Beaver Creek, which is approaching 1,500 active registered voters and has a precinct boundary adjustment. Note here, Beaver Creek has three precinct, has three precinct splits, and these are due to fire and cemetery district lines. Point 1, WT RFA is West Thurston Regional Fire Authority, Little Rock, and then Fire District 12, and then Cemetery District, Grand Mound. So we're going to divide Beaver Creek North and South along the section line. So the portion south is entirely precinct 189.2 and .3 splits. And so those are going to be renamed Beaver Creek South, given the same number, precinct 199. And the portion north, which is the entire .1 split, is going to be named Beaver Creek North with a new precinct number of 16. So approximate voters affected is 653, I'm sorry, 657. And then the precinct boundary adjustment, there was a change in a parcel boundary, so we just need to update the legals due to that, and that's just a little square. And so there are no voters in that area. Next is Lacey 24. It's approaching 1,500 active registered voters. So we're going to divide Lacey 24 North and South along the section line. Lacey 24 is going to be reformed from the northern area. We're going to create a new Lacey 59 from the southern area. So voter total, the new voter total of Lacey 24 is 679, and the new voter total of Lacey 59 is 718. Next, we're going to look at Yelm. Yelm 3 and Yelm 4 are both approaching 1,500 active registered voters. So for Yelm 3, we're going to divide Yelm 3 North and South along Railway Road and Middle Road. Yelm 3 is going to be reformed from the southern area, and we're going to create a new Yelm 7 from the northern area. So new voter total of Yelm 3 is 696, and new voter total of Yelm 7 is about 784. For Yelm 4, we're going to divide it north and south along To Home Boulevard, then north along the section line. Yelm 4 is going to be reformed from the southern area, and we're going to create a new Yelm 8 from the northern area. The new voter total of Yelm 4 is about 565, and the voter total of New Yelm 8 is about 710. So in summary, the new 2025 precinct count is going to go up, is going to go to 294. Approximate voters affected, 5,235. We're dividing about seven precincts. We're adding one precinct due to the City of Lacey annexation and seven precincts because they were approaching 1,500 voters. We're repealing one precinct. We're changing the names of four precincts. And then we have precinct boundary adjustments due to City of Lacey annexations. We have seven of those. And then nine precincts approaching 1,500 voters and precinct boundary adjustments. We're adding legal descriptions, one due to the City of Lacey annexation, and seven due to the precincts approaching 1,500 voters. We're repealing one precinct, and we're amending four precincts, legal descriptions for the City of Lacey annexations, and 10 for the precincts approaching 1,500 voters. The Commissioner District legal, legals are, that we're amending. And again, it's only internal precinct changes, no external boundary changes. It's Commissioner District 2 to reflect four added precincts and one repealed precinct. Commissioner District 4 to repeal, to reflect three added precincts and three renamed precincts. Commissioner District 5 to reflect one added precinct and one renamed precinct. Any questions?
Questions for Lynn? You know, the city precincts have boring names, like Lacey 13, and the county precincts have cool names, like Beaver Creek North or something. So if a city annexed a entirety of a precinct, would the name just go away? And they, you'd rename it to the Lacey one, just so for consistency?
Yes, yeah. So in this case, Tolmi, the entire Tolmi precinct got annexed. So it's being renamed Lacey 60.
So there's no more Tolmi precinct?
No.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Is there something you need to go over here, or is this just telling us kind of the timeline? Yeah, okay.
If Auditor Hall wanted to say something.
Doctor, you.
Thank you. What we would ask is if you could take action today so we could go ahead and start moving these precinct lines if there's no objections from the public. We do have a limited time to move all these voters to ensure they get the correct ballot.
Perfect, okay, thank you for that. Now we'll go to public testimony. Is there, I didn't have anyone preliminarily signed up. Has anyone joined the boardroom that wants to provide testimony on this issue? Seeing none, is there anyone online who wanted to provide testimony on this issue? Okay, I think we're good on that. Then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That closes the public hearing, and now we have two proposed actions if the Board is ready to move forward.
I move to adopt the ordinance for the proposed legal description and precinct boundary changes, updating six, my voice is sounding interesting. Something's going on there. I like it. Legal description and precinct boundary changes, updating 16 precincts with boundary line adjustments, adding eight precincts and their legal descriptions, repealing one precinct and its legal description, description, and updating 14 precincts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second to adopt this ordinance with all the different precinct changes outlined. Any discussion on that motion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second motion.
I move to adopt the ordinance for amending Commissioner District Number 2, Commissioner District Number 4, and Commissioner District Number 5 legal descriptions.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion in second to amend these legal descriptions. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you so much, Auditor Hall and staff. Let's go to our second public hearing. This is to, so this public hearing is to accept and consider testimony on proposed ordinance amending Thurston County Code Sections 2.118.010, 030, 040, 50, and 080, and repealing Section 2.118.100 relating to the Thurston County Citizens' Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined by Zoom, emailed in comment, mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, visit Thurston County homepage online, select B O C C Meetings, Hearings, and Work Session Agendas. Information to join this public hearing remotely is posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the livestream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Maria Ponte, Director of Human Resources, will provide some background on this topic. Anyone on the boardroom who wants to testify will be called. Those on Zoom then will be called. You'll have four minutes. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, state your name and address for the record. This public hearing is now open, and Maria will present background information, summarize written comments submitted, and any additional information requested by the Board. Maria Ponte.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Maria Ponte, HR Director. We're here to hold a public hearing to receive comment on a proposed ordinance amending Thurston County Code Chapter 2.118 related to the Thurston County Citizens' Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials, which I will refer to as the Salary Commission. Background leading to these changes. In 2022, the Thurston County voters approved expanding the Board of County Commissioners from three to five. Prior to 2023, RCW 36.17.024 stated that the county Salary Commission consisted of 10 members, with six of the 10 selected by lot by the county auditor, and the remaining four members selected by the county legislative authority. These four members were required to be residents of the county, have experience in the field of personnel management, and one was required to be selected from each of the following sectors: business, professional personnel management, legal profession, and organized labor. In 2023, the state legislature amended RCW 36.17.4 to revise the required membership on the Salary Commission for non-charter counties. Under the 2023 amendments, all Salary Commission members must be registered voters eligible to vote at the time selected and cannot be officers, officials, or employees of the county, or their, I've got allergies, excuse me, their immediate family members or dependents. The law now provides that the Salary Commission must include at least one voter selected by lot from each Commissioner District, and the member selected by lot must constitute a majority of the commission. The proposed changes to the county code revises the Salary Commission positions to be consistent with the changes to state law and include the following: updating the Commissioner Districts from three to five due to redistricting. Each district will have one representative on the Salary Commission, which is a voter selected by, excuse me, by lot by the county auditor. Any current Salary Commission members whose terms have not expired will be confirmed and continue to serve. The Salary Commission will continue to have four board members who meet the state law requirements and have experience in the field of personnel management or related field. As requested recently by the board, the draft ordinance is now written as follows. Quote, "Must have experience in the field of personnel management or related field, comma, for example, organized labor." Notice of the public hearing was posted in the Niskali Valley News on March 27. We have received one written comment in favor of keeping a dedicated seat for organized labor. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Maria? No, okay, thank you. We will move to public testimony, anyone in the boardroom who was here for this particular topic? Seeing none, I know Mr. Markley is, so I'm going to start with him. Mr. Markley, you have four minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. So I would like to speak in respect to the proposed changes to organized labor as well, actually. The other changes, many of them being necessary for compliance with state law, all well and good. I would like to argue in favor of having an actual designated position for organized labor despite the fact that there appears to have been some issue filling the vacancy in the past. My suspicion is that the issues filling that vacancy are related to, I'm not sure, some sort of communication issue. I know it's not lack of interest, and I know it's not lack of interest because I'm a very active organized labor person, and I applied to fill that vacancy and serve on the Salary Commission. I put in an application on November 7th, I went and checked it, and I still haven't gotten anything. And I know I'm not the only person sort of in the organized labor community that's taken an interest in filling that role. Just to provide some background on myself, I'm a shop steward with Whoopsie 443, that's the Washington Federation of State Employees. We're the largest local in the county by membership. And so I'm certainly qualified to fill the role, and yet it seems like the vacancy continues to be the case. Not quite sure what the story is there, but I think it's a really good example that there is value in keeping an organized labor seat there. Either way, regardless of whether the change is made or not, I hope that the process for approving folks goes ahead and goes through. By the new reading, in my view, I would be quite qualified either way. Nonetheless, I wanted to chime in and sort of make the observation that I don't think that change is specifically necessary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can't read the proceeding above. Brittany Miller, you're up, you have four minutes.
Thank you, I just also wanted to join and encourage you to keep a seat reserved for an organized labor representative. I agree with everything that Mr. Markley said before me, I know that there are people who would be interested. I don't know if it's an issue of getting the word out, or it seems like I've heard from, in meetings, that there was, you know, there are trouble, there is trouble getting applicants, but then we've just heard that there are applicants. So I would like for you all to recognize the importance of that organized labor seat and keep a seat reserved for that, please.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anyone else in line. Yeah, that's fine.
Hi, my name is Rochelle Martin, I'm the President of the Thurston Lewis Mason Central Labor Council, so I technically represent all union members within those three counties. I, like my sibling, Mr. Markley, I applied to be part of the Salary Commission and have not heard back. So there are definitely people that are interested. We know that there's been an issue with filling the seat. Organized labor has taken a, we have a different emphasis than we have in the past with our labor council. So we would like to have a stronger partnership with the county. And so hopefully, this is a way that we can foster a better partnership between organized labor and county officials. So I would urge you to keep that designated seat. There are definitely people that are involved, and our leadership with the labor council has changed. And so please consider keeping that seat, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I think that's it for public comment. Discussion from the board before we need to close the public hearing?
Just, look, I would like just a point of clarification. In my, in my mind, you know, I don't want the narrative to be that we have, that there's been some collective effort to prevent any from, anyone from being organized labor on the board, but my understanding is that there's two applicants that came in at this, and I would prob, this should probably be explained by Maria, but my understanding is the time that the two applicants that came in that identified themselves, it came in at about the same time that we were considering changing this ordinance. So the thought was, hold on, let's go through this process. Once this process is resolved, then it would be a review of applications. So is that, is there maybe somebody from the administration kind of explain? Because that's been explained to us when we asked, what's the status of the application?
Oh yes, I may, I would like for you to respond too, but just want to, since the clerk handles the intake of the...
The clerk is, yes, that's who I was thinking of.
I'd like just to give you an opportunity to comment on what's been received and what's been responded to.
Sure, we've received, received Mr. Markley's application and reached out to him mid-March regarding the pause that had taken place in appointments. We also reached out to Rochelle Martin mid-March regarding the pause that had taken place. We have since then just recently received an additional application that will be considered when all applications come forward to you as part of the recruitment. That's what we have this time.
So just making sure that those two folks that are, the contact information we have for them is accurate so that they are getting our emails. We can follow up with that outside of the process, but you're right, Vice Chair. Staff were waiting to develop the changes. We thought we could do that quickly towards the end of the calendar year. It took a little bit more time in internal review to get out, and so it went into the new year, and when we finally got it together. So clerk has identified the two applications, there's a new one that we'll be bringing to the board in a work session for your review, and here we are now, ready for your consideration.
And I think it would also be important to note that there's no meetings that have been missed. These, these meetings, this, this committee typically convenes in the fall. So this is when we would do this process to have this open discussion, to consider all these things. And then there's no, there's no haste, and there's nothing missed in the meantime while we work through this because the committee wouldn't even be meeting until like, what, September typically?
Typically, they convene in July. This year, we're moving it forward to June. So it starts summer and it usually ends in the fall.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a couple comments to make, too, Chair.
Before the motion? Or just generally, okay, go ahead.
Well, yeah, before the motion because the second motion on here is to approve the ordinance. And I personally am not comfortable approving the ordinance that doesn't have a designated seat for organized labor. Even though...
Not, we would close the public hearing, and then you would go to the next phase, and then that's, I'm just, like, it's okay.
Yeah, if that's how we want to do it, that's totally okay. I'll hold my comments till we get to that part.
If they're related to, I, yeah, I think this discussion piece, which is on my like bullet point agenda here, is just about the, I don't know, I think it's pretty wide ranging in terms of the public comment.
This is when you'd ask questions of staff.
Questions of staff of, for things that came up that was raised by public comment.
Okay, I do have a question for staff on the timeline of when the pause was implemented. I know that we put a pause on filling these vacancies. When was that pause put in place?
I mean, do you know the exact timeframe?
It was in the fall, it was late October or early November.
Okay.
Before the first application was received.
Okay, was that pause something that was a board direction, or was that something that was just administratively handled?
Maria, do you recall?
We already knew we needed to rewrite and update the code. So I had already started working with legal probably late summer, early fall. I don't have an exact date, but knowing that we were in this transition, it didn't make sense to make any new reappointments and then have to either make them or unappoint people. So that's the general timeframe that I would say.
Okay.
Commissioner Klaus, we'd have to go back to the meetings around there because I don't recall if there was a discussion. I do know that Maria had flagged it, that it needed to be done because the clerk also in one of the report outs, but I'm reluctant to say that what exactly happened because I would have to go back to the record.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we want to have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Motion is second, any discussion on that? Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I'll bang the gavel, our closed, our public hearing is closed, and now there is a possibility of having a motion to move, to move these sections forward as proposed or in amended form, is there such a motion?
Yes, Chair.
Yes.
So as Vice Chair, I would typically make the motion and the recommended action or something to that effect. I think, you know, we closed the public hearing, this is, the public hearing's done, we've received public input. And I, my preference would be to place this on a, on a future agenda for further discussion because it appears that there's, there's still some desire to talk about what we want to do. So I don't plan on making the motion like I'm, like kind of is my job, so.
Yeah, well, it's your prerogative.
So we can, somebody can make a motion, somebody can make an amended motion, or we can take no action and put it on an agenda in the future.
That's correct, we can take no action if that's the will of the board. Anyone else have an opinion about moving forward or not?
I think for the purposes of discussion, if, if we're not going to make this motion, I do have some comments to make if now is an appropriate time.
Sure.
Okay.
Can I point something out, though? Is that okay? If we take no action, it stays how it is.
Right.
Just to be, just to be clear.
And I had, in addition to the comments that I will eventually make, I have a question about what we discussed at our, one of our previous meetings on this item, which was that considering there is a pause in place until this ordinance is amended, then would those applications that are currently pending, just, we would just continue holding off on those until this ordinance is complete?
That's up to the board.
I would assume that we would do that, I don't, I guess in theory we could, I mean, it doesn't, I, I, I think it doesn't make sense if we don't know what, which spots we're trying to fill, what their categories are, to make decisions about filling them. I mean, so I think it just makes sense, especially in light of the letter that was sent to the Salary Commission. You know, it's not like they're going to be tasked with a whole bunch of work right in the next month or so, but...
If the legal representative is still required to be on there, then we can't fill it with...
Right, yeah.
You know, so, so it's, it's, it's in our, the ball's in our court, but, you know, like, I, I'm hearing that there's more discussion to be had, so I'm not willing to make a motion. I'm cool with just continuing the discussion and taking no action.
Whether or not there's a motion, we've always had the latitude to discuss the issue at the pub, following the public hearing, so I'm going to provide that latitude to Commissioner Klaus. I have some comments as well, but Commissioner Klaus, is there more that you'd like to share about your feeling about the direction?
Well, I'm hoping that, and I'm sort of tempted to try to make an amended motion on the spot, but I don't want to do that just in terms of process, I want it to be a clean motion. And I wouldn't be able to decide which code sections I want to change if I were to amend it. But I do think that, I do think that it's important to maintain a designated seat for an organized labor representative. Kind of going back to our conversation we had previously as a board during the work session. Future boards don't have to respect the current board's values as far as ensuring that there are organized labor voices on the Salary Commission. So because of that alone, I think that it's really important for us to ensure that we have that, we uphold that requirement and not just broaden, broaden the whole ordinance for those three seats that are selected by the commissioners. I think that, yeah, I, that's personally what I'll be requesting when we bring this topic up again, is to ensure...
So is your, is your proposal going to be an organized labor seat and then three other seats that will follow within the current language of human resources or a related field? Because right now we've got legal, business, we've got, we've got very specific, four specific buckets. Now you're saying one bucket and three flexible instead of four flexible or four buckets?
The number is not so much my concern because I know that there are legal requirements to the number of seats and all of that. So if there is, if it was, you know, one seat specifically designated for organized labor and three seats or four seats or whatever, that's the broadened language that is part of the draft ordinance now, that would be fine with me. I mean, that would even allow us the latitude to appoint more than one organized labor voice if we wanted to. But I think that it's, at a minimum, we should require one seat to be a representative of organized labor.
Just, just want to point out that, well, you know, and I hear what you're saying, I dig it, but by the same token, there's nothing in the future that prevents any future council or commission from changing what we, you know, so you're like, well, you know, I, I understand that, you know, the intent of the, of the commission now is to try to ensure that some organized labor representative is on there, great. And so you want it, but you're saying you want to keep that requirement in there. That doesn't mean that the future commission couldn't change that.
Right.
So it's kind of, I mean, what you're saying, I get it, but it doesn't exactly, it doesn't really solve or lock in anything. Simple solution in my mind, do nothing. And then, and then the labor representative is required to stay on there. We meet the intent of the law as it was.
Can I ask, can Maria ask something? Is there more to this, isn't there more to this change than just how the buckets are defined?
Correct, at the code as it exists only has three districts. So we won't be able to proceed and meet as a group because we have five commission districts. So that is one of the key changes, that if you take no action, we're not complying with state statute.
Action will need to be taken, doesn't have to be today, but it will need to be taken in fairly short order for at least to undo that wrinkle or address that wrinkle. Commissioner Grant, say your name.
Well, I was just wondering, in, just to respond to the ideas around whether we're going to have designated seats, I wonder if we could just add a motion with a comma that says, or one, at minimum one seat to be reserved for someone with organized, in organized labor, something like that. And then the other three, then would just be flexible?
Just instead of doing an on the fly kind of motion, what you could do is make a motion to direct staff to prepare a new ordinance. And then that, and then, and then you're giving them time to make sure that they go through the proper things, and it's not just us on the fly saying, you know, because you, oh, amend code Section 2.118, you know, like, that's just not a good method. So what you could do is you could say, you know, I'd like to make a motion, direct staff to redraft an ordinance amending Thurston County Code Sections, blah, 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 with the amendment that one seat be, you know, designated for an organized labor representative. You could do something like that.
Mr. Grant?
Thank you. Just based on the conversation, my recommendation is that we set this for an upcoming work session, and then that way we can go through the options and have that work session with some possible actions. Just, I'm just looking at the time and knowing that we have to go back to a board meeting to finish department items and seeing that there, there seems to be a desire to change, kind of... and seeing that there, there seems to be a, a desire to change kind of the code right now. I just, on the fly, I, I just would recommend instead just scheduling a future work session, having the language, well, you know, directing staff to, to have some proposals ready for us to, to discuss just based on public comment and some comments from commissioners as well.
Is that a motion?
I, yeah, I would.
I second that motion.
Discussion on the motion to discuss the set of future work.
Can we restate the motion?
The motion is to.
Essentially table this.
Is essentially to address the proposed ordinance at a future work session with staff bringing forward the different options for language to, in line with some of the suggestions made by the board.
Okay.
Any discussion on that? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. And so we can go ahead and discuss that. And that closes out that piece of the agenda. We are going to go back to the business agenda for the Board of County Commissioners meeting, which is item two, Commissioner's office, updating Thurston County Commute Trip Reduction Local Plan. Rebecca Harvey to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Rebecca Harvey, Climate Mitigation Senior Program Manager. Staff are requesting a motion to approve the updated Thurston County Commute Trip Reduction Local Plan. The Commute Trip Reduction, or CTR, law passed in 1991 as part of the Washington Clean Air Act with the intent to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and traffic congestion by reducing the number of cars on the road. Because of this law, Washington State has become a national leader in commute trip reduction. The CTR law affects large employers, generally those with 100 or more employees, and encourages workers to drive alone less by using transit, walking, biking, carpooling, or teleworking. We are fortunate here in Thurston County because Thurston Regional Planning Council, or TRPC, administers the CTR program on behalf of the county. TRPC completed this update of the CTR local plan in coordination with county staff. The plan sets a new four-year target for affected work sites to achieve a 42% drive alone rate, which is down from the current baseline of 45% driving alone. And that includes all alternative commute modes as well as teleworkers. TRPC conducts a survey of those work sites every two years to monitor progress. This plan also highlights how commute trip reduction work is integrated into other county plans, such as the Thurston 2045 Comprehensive Plan Updates and the Transportation Improvement Plan. And if residents would like to learn more about CTR and learn if their own workplaces participate, they can visit www.thurstoncommutes.org. Thank you so much for your support of this important plan and for highlighting it at today's meeting. I'm here for questions.
Questions for Rebecca? Nope. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the updated Thurston County Commute Trip Reduction Local Plan establishing new four-year targets and program strategies.
Motion is second to approve the commute trip reduction plan. Any discussion on that motion?
I just want to thank Rebecca for, for all of your work, but for, you know, your availability and coming here today to present this to us. I know we've, we've gone over this a number of times, but it's always good to hear the improvements that we're making thanks to your efforts. So I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Public Works is next. Increase a previously approved construction contract amount for Marvin Road Upgrade Phase One. Good afternoon, Ben Enfield.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Ben Enfield, Senior Civil Engineer with the Thurston County Public Works Design Engineering Group. Public Works is requesting permission from the board to authorize the Public Works Director to increase the previously approved construction contract amount awarded to Active Construction, Inc. for the Marvin Road Upgrade Project by an amount of $391,600 for a new aggregate contract amount of $6,877,706. This additional funding is requested due to a unit of bid error discovered in the contract bid form for concrete paving. The project scope has not changed. The bid contract, the bid contract correction aligns the contract bid quantity with the approved project plan quantity as designed. Funding for this contract increase is within the Public Works project budget and would come from transportation impact fees. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Good discussion last week at the work session. Thank you, Ben, for bringing this forward and call for a motion.
I move to authorize the Director of Public Works to increase the previously approved construction contract amount awarded to Active Construction, Inc. of Tacoma, Washington for the Marvin Road Upgrade Phase One, 22nd Ave to Union Mills Road, project CP 61478 by $391,600 to $6,252,460. And any change orders for this project due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope for up to 10% of the contract, $625,246 or an aggregate of $6,877,706.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this contract increase. Any discussion on the motion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Sheriff's Office, last but not least, bringing up the rear with four items, with item sub one, contract with North Thurston School District for School Resource Officer.
Good evening, Board. Sheriff Sanders, Thurston County. This is the continuance of a contract with North Thurston School District to provide one SRO.
Questions for the sheriff?
I, I appreciate you being succinct. I know we've had some back and forth today as well as over the last few weeks on this item. And I did have a couple of questions. And I, I sent a lengthy list of questions via email, but I'm not going to restate all of those questions here now. I particularly wanted to know, I, in reviewing the contract, it specifically calls out that the North Thurston School District's share is $95,000. When I read the motion prior to reading the contract, I thought the contract of $95,000 was the full cost of this position. Is there additional costs associated with this that the county is responsible for?
Correct. Yeah, the county picks up the other part of that FTE.
Okay. Do you happen to know what percentage the county pays for?
Well, full-time, it depends on the deputy that's assigned in that area. So the budget office typically budgets at the highest possible salary and benefit range. But for that position, it just depends on the, it, it could have a pay range depending on where the deputy is actually placed. But a deputy sheriff costs anywhere from $120,000 to $150,000ish a year approximately, depending on the pay scale.
Okay.
Those positions are already paid for, budgeted, part of our ongoing operating.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. I noticed I came across an older resolution from 2019 that is no longer in place because it had to do with that biennial budget. But I thought it was interesting because the Board of County Commissioners at that time approved the SRO only if the school covered at least 75% of the costs. So I was just curious as far as whether that's around the percentage that the school is currently paying.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So wait real quick on that. The 95, that, that's their share, I mean, the, whatever else the officer is doing is non-school related. Is that right?
No, the, the SROs are full-time funded for the schools in the, so for instance, it's kind of broken up. An SRO will spend Monday through Friday or Monday through Thursday in the school, full-time SRO. Then on holidays, they get the days off like the school does. On Christmas break, they'll usually go to a patrol schedule. So when they're not in the schools for an extended period of time, like summer, summer break, they go to a patrol schedule, which is why the, the schools pay for a, up to 75%. Because in the summertime, it's not like the SROs are just gone. They rotate back and they're still working.
But on non-school items?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah. So in the summertime, they still are doing patrol stuff.
It sounded like Commissioner Klaus was worried that they're paying, schools paying 75% or less of the work done in the school.
No, their, the SRO contract is that they're in the school during the school year. They pay up to seven, they pay approximately 75% of the salary for the SRO. And then when school's out, the SROs still have.
Yeah, because the, I remember this proviso and the board was worried about the budget. And we were like, and do we give this, do we give another FTE? And, and Sheriff is saying, well, 70% is going to come from the SRO contract. And we're like, okay, well then you only get it if that turns out to be true.
Correct.
Because otherwise we can't afford it.
Sure.
And so that's where that's kind of was, that's why that's in there.
Do you know if that proviso is something that was just for that biennial budget? Or was it something, and we probably would have to pull it up and look at it, but.
Probably.
Okay. Just, I was just curious.
That proviso is for a particular budget.
Yeah. Okay.
But I mean, what, what, what will happen is like Robin Campbell, she would bring forward, when we do the next budget, she'd bring forward all the old provisos. And we would go through them to see if they, if we wanted to carry them forward.
Okay.
And we'd make decisions. Do they still apply or not? So yeah, it's, it's budget by budget.
Okay.
Chair, we, we went over provisos last year.
Yeah.
If you recall, we went through, it's quite a lengthy list.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Let's see, the other question I had, so I appreciate, under Sheriff Mancius for getting me some documentation that he was able to locate after this morning's agenda setting meeting. And out of curiosity, I was wondering, the training checklist that was provided was just the checklist unsigned, which again, I appreciate that you were able to get that so quickly. Do we have on file some sort of signed documentation that verifies that all mandated trainings have been completed? Or if this is a new SRO, can you confirm that a mechanism is in place for ensuring these trainings are completed within the six-month timeframe set forth by statute?
Yes, that's going to be in their training file. And again, the email I got was at 13:05, so I didn't have enough, I didn't have enough time to go through. I did pull just some of Deputy Rose's training certificates. So in his training file, you know, we have the Washington State School Security Conference. We have the Criminal Legal System, Structural Inequalities, Monetary Sanctions, Policy and Reform. We've got current online behavioral trends and updates for juveniles. We've got Threat Assessment Level Two. We have Crisis Hostage Negotiation Level Two. Let's see here. We have Crisis Hostage Negotiation Level Three. We have a virtual summit that certifies that he attended all sessions of the summit and therefore met all the training requirements for school resource officers outlined in Washington State House Bill 1216. We've got a Certificate of Training for Active Shooter Management. We have a Certificate of Training for QPR Suicide Prevention Gatekeeper Program. We have a Training for Student Threat Assessment Level One. We have a Training for National Advanced SRO Course. That's the second 40-hour course. We have a Training for Group Crisis Intervention. We have a Training in Assisting Individuals in Crisis. We have a Training for National Basic SRO Course. That's the first 40 hours that's required in the first six months of becoming an SRO. We have a Certificate of Completion that Deputy Rose attended. Enforcement Training for Social Media and Open Source Investigations. We have eight hours of training for Domestic and Youth Violence, Investigating Crimes of Violence Against Juvenile Female Victims. We have a Training for Hostage Negotiations. Those were some of the trainings that are in his current file. So most of those are, are in excess of state requirements. And then the SRO Basic covers the initial piece that you're talking about, which was the House bill that was passed. So this is kind of what I'm getting at, is that our SROs, they go to the basic stuff, but then in the summertime, we try to send them to all of these other courses that are not required by statute. And I think that just goes to show the commitment between the school districts and the sheriff's office.
That's really great that you were able to pull that list before, before now. I appreciate that. That does answer the question about the trainings that are on file. I also, well, I guess before we have a proposed motion on the agenda, just because I have other points, but I don't want to take up all this time and keep the floor right now. So I would request that. Okay. So before we move forward with the discussion on the proposed motion, I'd like to ask the board's consideration to defer this item to our Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting on April 29th, so that I can complete outreach and engagement with the sheriff's office and the school and gather further input. So if there's no objection, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item until April 29th.
Is there a second?
Commissioner, if I may, I, I would request that we push for a vote. Just at this point in time, this is not a new contract. This isn't a new concept. This isn't new equipment. This is a new funding request. This is the ongoing commitment of a program that the schools, quite frankly, have begged us to be a part of, that the community has begged us to be a part of. To my knowledge, there is no complaints that have come, at least to my level, of any school resource officer. So definitely nothing that would rise to the level of misconduct. I've heard only positive things about all three of our school resource officers in Rainier, North Thurston, and Rochester. And, and again, this is one of the ones where we, I guess as an organization, we just assumed the county commissioners would be on board with the ongoing program. You know, I've answered as many questions as I can in the, in the couple hours leading up to, up to this meeting. And I'm certainly happy to meet with Commissioner Klaus moving forward. I, I think what's really called for here is that a lot of her questions need to be answered with the school district. I'm happy to attend a meeting with maybe our school resource officer, the school district, and, and Commissioner Klaus. But I don't think any of that has any bearing on the value of the program, the intent of the program. Clearly, we're training our staff correctly. We're not getting any complaints about staff that I'm aware of that would rise to any level of misconduct. And again, when I ran for sheriff, there was a conversation about pulling the school resource officer from Niskali Middle School, and it created uproar. And that was the pressure that actually kept this, this previous contract in place. So just in my opinion, I'm not seeing a need to delay. This is an ask by the school district. We wouldn't be here if they wouldn't, if they had not asked us to, to provide this service.
Sure.
Real quick before I go to use, there's a motion. I didn't hear a second, so we may be moved.
Yeah, if there's no second, the motion dies.
If that's what you're going to discuss, we may not need to go there because there's no second to the motion.
No, I, I just wanted, I just want to say the motion will die for lack of a second if there, and I haven't heard one. But I, I did want, I just, I do want to commend Commissioner Klaus. This is exactly how you do what you're trying to do. So you're going about the, I'm all about process, and you're going about the process very, very smoothly. So thank you.
Commissioner Grant?
Yeah, and I, and I, I'm reluctant to second this because, you know, this is, and I think we talked about this earlier, that this is an ongoing contract. This is just an essential part of the, the business that goes on within a county on a regular basis. And I'm, you know, I would say that, holding this up, I'm, I'm sure the school has a timeline that they need to be, you know, with contracts. And so I'm a little reluctant to, to second it. I think that I do want to encourage you to have a meeting with all of the, the different people. Again, I'm going to reiterate that when it's a maintenance level, meaning a contract is being renewed versus a brand-new policy-level item, meaning that we're asking for something new to be put into place. Generally, my response will be that we move it forward just to get business done. And so that's why I'm not seconding it.
I do have some, I don't want to keep, I know that for the purposes of the process, in order for me to continue with the points I have, which address some of what you said, there would need to be a second. I don't want to delve into that. If there is not a second, at least for purposes of discussion, but.
Okay. Well, I, I was about five years ago or six years ago, and I've told Commissioner Klaus right where she was. As a new commissioner, I'd heard some weird stuff about SROs, didn't know a lot about it, was concerned that there was issues. And as I've said at previous meetings, I called all three superintendents at that time to see what, how they felt about the program. They all felt really strongly about it. I would say in, in support. I would say between the school districts and the sheriff's office and the state, what I learned in my delving into that is really, it was, it was not the sheriff's office that really had, and I don't want to say a problem, but it was the school districts, some of them didn't know about the new legal requirements. And then a couple of years later, when I filed up with the state to say, how's that data analysis look? They were like, you know, we backburnered that. We're overwhelmed. It's still on the books. We still want the data to come in, but we really haven't done what we intended to do with that. So it was like, the state wasn't really moving forward with the analysis that I had hoped to see. And the school districts at the time, I, I hope they are now, but at the time that the legislation was new, they, they, they weren't tracking. So I was able to give them a heads up like, hey, you better look at these new RCWs because you don't want to be out of compliance. So, you know, like, and again, I, I think a conver, if, I, I appreciate the sheriff offering to have that conversation. I think that's probably the best, if I were you, that's the best thing you could do to make yourself comfortable with where this is all at, is to talk to the school district with the sheriff. And SRO, I think that's an awesome. Make yourself comfortable with where this is all at, is to talk to the school district with the sheriff and SRO. I think that's an awesome idea if you're willing to do it.
More than happy.
But I'm, you know, for me, I, I think that any concerns that are out there, I don't even think really relate to the, to this, to the, to the provisions of this contract. You know, they're really about data reporting and analysis and things that are outside the scope of what your officer does onsite at North Thurston. So I, I'd like to just see this proved at this point.
Make a motion? I move to authorize the director of public, wrong one. Uh, I move to approve the contract with North Thurston School District for ninety-five thousand dollars for Thurston County Sheriff's Office. To provide a full-time school resource officer in the North Thurston School District, Niskali Middle School and the seven elementary schools. During the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven to twenty twenty-eight school years.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Mihia? Okay.
Commissioner Grant?
Commissioner Grant?
Hit it louder.
Okay, I heard two.
Okay, second, uh, and the second discussion on the motion.
Just want to make some kind of general remarks. Uh, I, I want to acknowledge and show appreciation for the sheriff's efforts to follow proper process and create space for input. Right? When you have a controversial, I don't know, I don't, it's not controversial. When you have a contract where we have questions. It's important that you create the opportunity and the space for have, us to have that discussion and it's important that we go about the process correctly. Uh, had the sheriff signed this contract prior to coming in here and then asked us to ratify it afterwards, there would be a lot of upset commissioners. And it is very important that we ensure we do not set that precedent in this boardroom because that opens the door for that kind of uh bucking the process. So like, just remember, process is important, ensuring that authority is. You know, delegated appropriately and we all create the opportunity to have these discussions. Because it's great that Commissioner Klaus can ask these questions here and not after you've already made agreements with the school.
Sheriff Sanders is pretty confused by what you're talking about.
Just let that go.
I try to follow the process. I will also say, I, I want to make sure that when we're doing all these, any questions you guys have, I'm always happy to have those discussions. On the other hand, every one of the, the partners involved in this are expecting a swift passage of this. They're expecting consistency. One of the number one complaints I hear from school districts throughout the entire county is like jurisdictions, commissioners, councils, whatever, waiting until the last witching hour to let them know, by the way, you get an SRO this year. So for me, it's important to get ahead of the curve early, let them know, yes, we're committed to the program, yes, we're going to provide the bodies. We've made it a priority even throughout the, the staffing struggles of, of the county over the last couple of years. I'm like, you're not losing your SROs. It's a massive workload inside the school, we're going to keep them there and you're going to have that resource. So that's why to me it's important to make sure we can answer those questions. I'm happy to go into training records and state law and all that stuff, but when it comes to support of the board and support of the sheriff's office for the school districts, I want to be there and I want to show them that. Hey, this is something that we all stand behind and we want to make this as, as good of a partnership as possible, so.
Yeah, so I want to say I, I do appreciate you getting ahead of the curve, like you mentioned, because that does allow for time for questions and things like that. Um, I would have had some of my questions to you earlier, had it not been for a couple families, two families last week reached out to me. Um, after they saw an article posted, I think in The Jolt about this and um they were really concerned. Um, I, and I won't go on record with their concerns as they're probably a little bit private in nature, but maybe me and you can talk about that because. Um, there, there are some parts of the state statute regarding this that aren't addressed within the contract. But also the contract doesn't need to, I acknowledge it, doesn't need to address every single state law around this. So.
You're on contract.
Yeah, right. So for me, it's just a matter of like, you know, if we, um. I mean, two weeks would have allowed for me to have time to get with you and maybe have that meeting with, with the school and we can still do that, even if this um. Motion is, you know, passed today, but um, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Commissioner Mihia?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I kind of will echo Commissioner Mensah what you mentioned um of coming in, right? And um, I went to high school in Tennessee, different relationship with SROs, different um culture completely. And um, what I've seen from SROs here at the sheriff's office is that they're very engaged with their student populations and. Um, appreciate that piece and um, I educated myself on, on kind of the student populations here locally and kind of that relationship especially. Um, because there is uh, you know, and, and some county, even counties in Washington State where um minority students. Tend to um kind of have those little uh, get them in trouble more, um, the uh, SROs are a little bit harder on them, but. Um, just kind of what I've seen here in Thurston County, kind of seen from the sheriff's office and your staff is um just. That level of engagement um especially i- is very important and um being seen with the students. Um, and so, you know, I, I um will agree with Commissioner Mensah and his statements on kind of. The ongoing nature of this contract and, you know. That a separate governmental agency is the one who is requesting this from us and continuing to request this for us. Um, this has been going on for, for a long time, so.
Yeah, and I would just say too that, you know, one of the major goals, like, yeah, we want school safety, we want to be able to deal with the issues, but. We're also trying to build relationships with people early on so that they, they, they actually become accustomed to knowing who we are. Um, because whether or not we have a resource officer in the school or not, we're still, that deputy is going to be out here somewhere, driving around, patrolling a district. Um, they're still going to get called to the school when there is a problem and uh you can't build fundamentally positive relationships by being overhanded, over, over. Uh, strong handing juveniles. You can't do it by arresting every juvenile you come across. Um, you can't, you can't just be mean to all of them. So really like the goal here isn't to do all of those things, it's to build those long-term relationships. Um, and you know, you talk to a lot of people now, they're like, oh my gosh, I still know who my school resource officer is. Like he came to my, came to my place of work and he's out of the schools now, but he took a, a shoplifting or whatever it is. And, and you see those long-term bonds kind of build um as people graduate school and, and go on to do other things in their lives, so.
Let's see, Commissioner Klaus?
Yeah, I just, and, and I'll wrap up because I know we'll talk more about this, but um I wanted to outline that. One section of the RCW, which is twenty-eight A dot four hundred dot three four five, section two of that RCW requires the school districts. With SROs to annually review and adopt an agreement with local law enforcement. And so that's where I get a little caught up on some of these details because it's like, well, what's the responsibility of the sheriff's office versus the school? And that's part of what I want to try to like iron out um with you on, in the next couple of weeks here. But um just because we're, we're having this meeting, I think that it's important to acknowledge that the intent behind. Um, the twenty twenty-one law that was passed for HB twelve fourteen. Um, right in the statute, it spells out that the intent is um. Let's see, the legislature acknowledges the disproportionate impact that interactions with police have on youth of color and on black youth in particular. Not only are black youth more likely than their white peers to have contact with police at a young age despite similar or lower rates of illegal behavior. But early police contact for black youth is predictive of future arrests in a way that is not true for white youth. Um, and that's just a little bit of uh, the intention spelled out in the statute, which is why I take it so seriously to ensure that we're upholding all of our statutory obligations. And I appreciate that with the limited time you've had to address those questions that you've taken the time to do that with me. Um, and I look forward to talking more about this with you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Klaus. Um, I, no further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote on the motion. Again, just to restate it, it's a motion to approve the contract with North Thurston School District. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstained.
And one abstention, okay. So that passes four zero with one abstention. Thank you. Let's go to item B or two, contract with Department of Corrections for Thurston County Narcotics Task Force.
This is also an extension of our existing contract with the Department of Corrections, uh, which reimburses them up to ten thousand dollars uh for overtime costs associated for working with the drug unit. Uh, the funds are paid out of the Drug Seizure Fund, so there is not a general fund ask of this and, yeah.
Questions for the sheriff? Is there a motion?
To approve a contract, Washington State Department of Corrections DOC, for two DOC employees to participate in Thurston County Narcotics Task Force operations. And for the sheriff's office to reimburse DOC for overtime costs up to ten thousand dollars per year through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And authorize the sheriff or designate to execute the contract and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Second?
Second.
Okay, second from Commissioner Mihia. Uh, any discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Third Sheriff's Department item is interlokal local cooperation agreement for SWAT deployment with Lacey Fire District Three.
Uh, yes, we traditionally have had medics assigned to our special weapons and tactics team uh for a number of reasons. Um, we have recently opened that up, we've added a few more medics. Uh, Lacey Fire is one of those, whoops, is one of those jurisdictions and we did not have an ILA with them. So this is just the approval as we are two governing bodies uh to comply with the procedures of Thurston County and get approval from the Board of County Commissioners to. Uh, incorporate Lacey Fire Department into that ILA. And obviously the, for those that don't know, the benefits of having a medic on the SWAT team are plentiful. Um, oftentimes if the SWAT team is deployed, um traditionally. Um, Thurston County Medic One would have to just stage there for hours, which takes a medic unit out of, out of commission. Um, now we have a medic who's already on scene, we can just call them if we do need them for something. Uh, furthermore, the SWAT team would be deployed to uh active shooters and things of that sort. So having a, a trauma medic on scene. Uh, would be extremely helpful as well in a scenario like that or a mass casualty scene, so.
Questions on that item?
Move to approve the interlocal agreement with Lacey Fire District Three for SWAT deployment and authorize the sheriff to execute the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the interlocal agreement for Lacey Fire District Three SWAT deployment. Any discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And the last sheriff's item, single source purchase grappler system.
Uh, we received a federal grant for two additional grappler systems and some nets. As we spoke about last time, we have since saved quite a bit of money on the grappler system. Because Thurston County Central Services is now qualified to install them. Um, so with that excess funding um in that grant, I think we purchased fifteen nets, seventeen nets um at three hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred and seventy-five dollars apiece. Um, so this is to execute that as it is a sole source item, uh, no one else makes the grappler.
Questions for the sheriff on the grappler item?
You said two grappler units, but the motion says four. Do you know, is it four or?
It's a typo at the top. If you look down a little further, it says two.
Sorry.
It's two.
It's two.
Oh, okay.
Two grapplers and then um the rest is to replenish our nets. We've been using a lot of nets lately.
Maybe I have an old agenda, but I guess as long as the motion's read correctly, then we're, we're good to go.
Can you make that two?
I move to approve the single source purchase of two grappler units and associated equipment from Stock Enterprises also LLC. For twenty thousand, two hundred dollars and fifty-five cents and authorize the sheriff or designate to execute the purchase, contract and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Is there a second? Motion and second to approve the single source purchase. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any faults? Thank you, Sheriff and Under Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay, time for commissioner reports. Uh, Commissioner Mihia, start, down, you're in.
Thank you. Um, so. Since our last board meeting, uh, I attended the National Association of Hispanic County Officials. Um, me and Commissioner Fournier did a tour of the Puget Sound Estuaryum downtown.
It took two and a half hours?
No, it just took an hour.
Because it's on my calendar for two and a half hours.
I mean, you might have a lot of questions.
You might have a lot of questions.
They're starfish.
Um, and um, I've been attending uh the summit planning meetings for the. Uh, forum that's being held for moving forward together and that's a partnership between the league uh as well as multiple jurisdictions. Um, I've been attending meetings for Take Your Child to Work Day Planning and staff are doing a fantastic job and I'm so excited. Um, for that day and, and to see all the kiddos around here. Um, attended the legislative session update with WASAC, attended the Readers Our Leaders event uh with Commissioner uh Mensah. And uh me and Commissioner Fournier attended a meeting with Commissioner Swope on a potential joint project. Um, and then also uh I just got uh the notice from uh Governor Ferguson that uh. He has appointed me to the Affordable Housing uh Commission at the state, so I'll be working on that. That is all.
Thank you, Commissioner Mihia. Be sure, I'll write your point.
Today I went and visited with TCOM for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Today was superhero day, so there's a few dispatchers dressed up as superheroes. Um, they, so being that it's telecommu, that it's dispatcher week, they do a, a kind of a raffle gift basket thing to show appreciation to their dispatchers. And Matt and I are putting a basket together that will be raffled off and. I challenge any other commissioners to uh do the same, put a basket together and you can drop it off to TCOM and they can raffle it off and. Uh, show appreciation for the, the, the great work that our, our nine-one-one dispatchers do. Uh, Matt has been told to make sure that our basket is better than any other commissioner's baskets. So there's a challenge, gauntlet is thrown down. Uh, I know the.
Basket due by?
The baskets are due by the end of the week. They're going to raffle them off Friday. I, I see Commissioner Grant is writing feverishly. And she cannot turn down any challenge.
That's true.
Yeah, so uh, so that's going on. Uh, it would be cool if you guys participated in that. Uh, went on the Estuaryum tour, I, I think several other folks are doing that as well. Uh, took a walk down our, our uh in construction or under construction Gate Belmore Trail. I think it's, is it two miles? Uh, so we went and, and walked most of that, it's looking great, there's a nice parking lot that's built out. It, it has beautiful views of the Glacial Heritage Park. So I, I think it's on the west side of that park, which you don't usually see. The public access has always been on the east side of that park, so it's kind of cool to get on the other side and it'll be neat to walk through that whole thing. Uh, there, they should be paving it when, do you know when?
I don't know the exact.
Next few weeks, I think they're paving it. So it'll be done soon and it, and it.
Appreciation day?
Before that, I think. It, it looks really nice and it, it's going to be cool.
May tenth.
Uh, there's a lot of commu, you know, there's, there's a lot of community out there that's being very positive with the responses. Uh, the comments we're getting on our Facebook page, you know, some of the community members that live there now are really excited about having a place that's safe to take their kids bike riding. That's not a, 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 a far drive. Uh, so it, it, it's really cool. I like seeing that, uh, that work getting done. I had a visit with a UW student, uh Juan Esteban, who is a, uh, he's, he's in their uh planning uh program. And he's doing a South County uh kind of assessment. Uh, and he's going to be going to the different planning commissions throughout South County and talking about the different things that he's kind of learned and discovered. And some of the things that, that, some of his insights that he wants to share with South Thurston County, so that, that was pretty cool. Uh, had a meeting with Thurston Conservation Dist- District about wildfire planning. Uh, had a meeting with Roadstone, which is the real estate wing of um Lakeside Industries. Met with Fire Commissioner District Six Stan Moon, who's also the chair of the Medic One uh EMS Council, had a good meeting with him. Did some judging for the Future Farmers of America on their public speaking down at Centrilia College and that, I did that last year, did that this year again and it is. It's, it's pretty cool, it's a lot of fun. Uh, the amount of work and preparation that the kids do putting into that is, is pretty wild because they show up like. Locked in and ready to perform and, and, and they're very good public speakers. Uh, as you guys saw when they came in here and they spoke to us, man, it's just like, they, they'll blow you away. And then I did a, an interview with the Olympian that was taped and, and written on about the, the Ag Industrial Park or the Ag Innovation Park in Tenino that recently opened. And uh, that, that, that sums it up nicely.
Thank you, Commissioner Fournier, Commissioner Grant?
Working nine to five.
Um, let me see. I'm going to consider making a motion that we move this to the beginning of um the meeting so that all the people that have come to the meetings can actually hear. All of the things that we do, uh, because.
Meetings don't usually go quite the same.
Right, I know.
Plus there's people in line.
I've got, kind of a long one. So um I um, over the spring recess, I had the opportunity to attend. The National Association of Workforce Boards Conference in Washington DC. Um, I wanted to take a moment to share what that event was um and what, what it means and what I learned and why you would want a commissioner to go. Um, you know, the National Association of Workforce, or they call it NOB, um, represents over five hundred local workforce boards across the country. Uh, those are pub, public and. Those are pub, public and private partnerships that connect people to jobs, skills, and careers. And here in Washington, we have 12 of those workforce regions. I serve on the board along with others in previous time. I've served on the board at Pack Mountain, which is the one that serves us. I attended to collaborate and to network and to bring back strategies to strengthen our own workforce pipeline. And, you know, the landscape in Washington, in Thurston County is, you know, we have over 47,000 people working locally, 13,000 commuting. Oh goodness, over 7,000 private businesses, 8% of all of the jobs are healthcare and over 1,900 social service and behavioral health employers. And Pack Mountain's work has partnerships with SBSC, K-12, and New Markets Go Center. And some of the things I took away from that that are most important are that today's workers want purpose. They want to know why their work matters and that professional skills are the number one thing, even in trades. That was a discussion that we were having at that level in many different formats, that professional skills are really important even if and when working in trades. And that learning is, 66% of young people across our country say the opportunity to grow is the top reason to stay in a job. And so these are all things that, and the last thing I want to talk about is that we must be relevant. This generation won't wait around. If we build relevance, they'll show up. If not, they'll walk. We talked a lot about millennials and how they can, and what they really want. And so here in Thurston County, I'm excited, you know, that the future of our workforce will be discussing more things around opportunity centers and not just, I want to get a job, but instead, how do we, what kind of opportunities can people working, looking for jobs actually get? And how could Pack Mountain help them? And so then, and then I met with Senator Murray and Senator Cantwell's staff and was, after that, and which were great discussions around congressional spending. And then had a US Capitol tour where we actually got to see Cory Booker delivering his 25-hour speech. We were in the wings on a private tour. And it was, even caught a glimpse of Senator Bernie Sanders as we were on a tram and really had a moment to soak in the gravity of where we were. So since returning on April 7th, I've been nuts busy. And I have met directly with seven different county departments, and I'm not going to go into all of them, but Sheriff's Office, Thurston Mason BHO, we've had the jails crisis work group. I've worked with over eight partner organizations, including going to the two different WASAC meetings that were, that went over legislative priority or legislative things. With, met with TRPC for collaboration, met with the regional, or attended Regional Housing Council, went on a tour. Been talking to Pack Mountain, met with Nisqually Tribal Council. That was really a great opportunity for us to collaborate and I'm excited about, you know, I actually went with a gift. The, an honoring, you know, that they're a sovereign nation and that it's really important to me that we build a relationship and continue to build a relationship as we move forward. And it was a really great meeting. Met with Thurston County Chamber of Commerce and then attended a fundraiser for Truly Motivated Transitional Living, which is run by an amazing executive director, Carmen. And they focus in Yelm and it was so well attended. I've never seen anything like it. And they raised over $150,000 for addiction recovery, community building, and reentry support. And then I did constituent engagements. Went on the Clearwood Homeowners Association Tour, met with Rosemont Senior Living in Yelm, went to the East Haven Villa in Yelm, attended the Yelm Senior Center Bingo and helped the Chamber of Commerce in Yelm, serve all of the residents at the senior center yesterday before Bingo. We made them dinner and served it to them, made by Uptown Lounge, the chef. So it was pretty great and we got to eat that too. And then, and then, and I think that's it. I talked about TMTL. So it's been a really busy last couple of weeks and that's it.
Thanks for the update. I wanted to say it's really cool to hear you talk about Pack Mountain and all the stuff that you learned in DC that you could bring back here because while we were out on spring recess, I was, I think, the only commissioner even in the state. I don't know if everyone left the state, some left the country. So, but I was here in Thurston County and I was holding down the fort, going to some meetings. And one of them was TRPC and we had a presentation from Pack Mountain. So that's really cool that you're doing work with that. So for me, since our last meeting, I had a tour of Lacey Makerspace and I was thoroughly impressed. I actually am looking forward to the Fix It Fair tomorrow, which is a collaboration between Lacey Makerspace and our Thurston County Public Works Team. I want to say it's the second one, but maybe it's been going on longer than that.
I read that, yeah, because I went last year.
Okay.
So it's at least second.
Yeah. Over the last couple of days, I was playing with my nephew's throwing axe set and him again, and he's mad at me to the Fix It Fair tomorrow to see if they can help me before I see him again, and he's mad at me. So Lacey Makerspace is really awesome, place to go. I won't elaborate now because we don't have a lot of time, but gosh, I was impressed. I mean, my childhood self would be, it would be a dream. So after that, I attended the Marine Vegetation Implementation Strategy Coffee Chat Online. I attended the Fair Board Meeting, which was great. That was my first time attending a Fair Board Meeting. And similar to Commissioner Mejia, now I'm going to try to take every opportunity I can to remind people of the fair because I got to see some of the really hard work that goes into it behind the scenes and it's really, really fascinating. So it starts July 31st this year and I'll be passing out little flyers everywhere I go to try to get people to the fair this year. I also had some constituent engagement and I attended the SWAC meeting, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting. Attended, like I said, TRPC. I met with Mayor Joe DePinto, had a one-on-one conversation with him, which was really interesting. I learned quite a bit about Yelm and what's going on out there. The Board of Health Subcommittee's met, both the Data and the Education Outreach Subcommittee, and I attended those meetings as well. We all had our Board of Health meeting. Regional Housing Council met, ORCA also met. And I had a meeting with staff about the Johnson Point Roundabout Project in response to a constituent question that kind of prompted me to be curious about stormwater systems and how we're managing that out there at Johnson Point. And that is all I have.
Okay, great. I'll back clean up here. I attended the Partners in Student Health meeting, which was mentioned at the Board of Health meeting. All of our community members from the Board of Health were there. I think except for all, three of the four were there and lots of public health staff. And that was interesting to see the partnerships that have been created. I was, when I was out of the state, I was in California at the Bioners Conference, Revolution from the Heart of Nature. It was a pretty inspiring three days. Just to give you an example of one of the sessions that I attended that I thought was pretty cool, I learned about something called biomimicry, which I didn't know what that meant. But basically, it's like a new design paradigm where basically you study, you look at the land before it was developed and you study all the functionality. And then when you design the structures, you try to mimic that so that you're not losing anything. So it's a way to continue to develop and grow, but like not have, and there's new software tools and things that are being developed to help you do this in a way that's efficient. So that was really, just one example of something that was really exciting that I learned about at that conference. While I was at the conference, I attended a meeting with the county manager with the FIFA Group and the mayor of Lacey and Olympia. And there's some new stuff that's coming down the pike on that that we'll get into at a later time. Had a meeting with a Fair Board applicant who was interested in that, attended Innovative Justice Law Meeting. I was on the Community Alignment Group for the Homewater School District Strategic Planning Session. We completed that work. There were two sessions and this was the second. Attended a meeting with governor's staff regarding the Right of Way Initiative. This was the chair of the board, Andy Ryder, Dante Payne, and Debbie Sullivan, all impressing upon the governor's staff how important the Right of Way projects have been to our community and how, you know, how difficult it will be for us if they're not continuing, if we don't get some operational funding to keep them afloat. And that was a productive meeting, I think. Readers are leaders benefit with Commissioner Mejia, legislative update at WASAC. Did a podcast with Paul Jewell at WASAC. And I chose to highlight all the criminal justice programs that we're doing in Thurston County, specifically LEED, the Resource Hub, the TCAP program is just kind of, you know, a pilot. And then ticking through a bunch of other things that we've been working on. He was really interested in all that. He didn't know what LEED was, so I thought that was, that's good. So a lot of people do know what LEED is, but the fact that, you know, the fact that Paul didn't know means it was worth talking about. So more people know what we're doing.
I can't believe you still didn't rap your banjo skills a little bit more.
See you in my league. I had a meeting with.
You have to plug it for him, then he can't get in trouble for it.
Commissioner of Public Lands invited me to a meeting, so that was kind of cool, unprecedented, to talk about maybe trying to take a more of a landscape planning approach to capital state forests rather than just cut by cut. I mean, you can pause legacy forest sales, but what do you really have? You have chunks of legacy forest, but like, can we do better in looking at the landscape and doing a more strategic approach to how we manage that? So I was really excited to hear him, his receptivity to that. Met with residents from Summit Lake that were curious about what the heck's going on with the delicate cuts, so I gave them a high-level update. Sentencing Guideline Commission Meeting, Jail Space Work Group with Commissioner Grant, and of course, Board of Health. So, you know, busy time for all of us, it sounds like. So thanks for everybody's patience today. We got through a lot and covered some public hearings. If there's anything, nothing else, we're at the end of today's agenda and we're adjourned.